Good morning, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. Today is 9:01. It is Monday, October 20, 2025. All council members are present: Town Manager, Deputy Town Manager, Town Clerk, and Town Attorney. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm reading too fast. What would I do?
We are thankful for the many blessings and opportunities we experience each day in this community. May we act with fairness, integrity, and compassion on behalf of those people of Fort Myers Beach, listening with open minds and respectful hearts. As we listen to public comment and to one another, let us do so with open minds and respectful hearts. May we, may the decisions we reach today benefit the people of Fort Myers Beach both now and in the years to come. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the approval of the final agenda. Is there any amendments or a motion to approve the final agenda?
Move for approval.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
We would like to ask council to approve canceling and removing the Town Attorney Item A, which is the litigation executive session that had been scheduled for 3 o'clock today.
Okay.
Cancel.
That's been canceled for today?
Yes.
Or just this item? But we still having the meeting at 3:00 or no?
No.
Okay.
We want to totally cancel it.
Okay.
Is that good news?
We'll find out.
We just don't have, we were kind of led to believe that we would have some type of settlement proposal, but that hasn't materialized, so we just canceled to save your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
John, would you like to amend your motion?
I would love to amend my motion.
All right. Got a motion by Counselor King.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries unanimously. Next, we have public comment. Madam Clerk?
I have nobody signed up.
Anyone out there want to speak your public comment? Dawn, are you sure?
Can I speak my own?
Yeah, you can. All right.
You can speak twice.
Just trying to keep you on your toes. All right. Closed public comment. Local achievements and recognitions. Counselor Safford?
I'd like to recognize town staff again. We had a great grand opening at Bay Oaks on Wednesday, and I look back at how much devastation there was, especially in that area, which was our debris field for all intents and purposes, and how we have bounced back and we've built a more resilient gym. Hats off to you, Jeff, and your team. I mean, it's, it's great, and it's great that we got it done right before season. So, good luck, and I hope we have a good season.
Counselor Woodson?
Yeah, I will reiterate what Scott said about Bay Oaks. It was great. I had friends in town this past weekend that haven't been here since last February, or just this past February, and even from February to now, the changes that they see and the progress that they see in the building, I mean, they were just ecstatic. So, that's hats off to the entire team.
Anything else? Vice Mayor?
I'm sure others will expound on this a little bit more, but I would say a couple things. I was unfortunately out of town this weekend, but I had a chance to watch on Facebook the walk around, the boat around on Saturday, led by Kim Ryan and our Chair of the Anchorage Advisory Committee, Chris King, and our wonderful harbor master, Curtis Ludwig, and they did an excellent job of showcasing the mooring field and all the facilities that we welcome folks to Fort Myers Beach with, and I commend their efforts on that. And if you haven't had a chance to see that, just go back and watch that. It was on Saturday. It was excellent. Again, I was watched from afar, but I watched the VFW event, and just a tremendous event, and I just congratulate all. Beach Talk Radio Ed and the mayor were there for the show. I think I saw John was there, John King, and so it was a great event. I wish I could have been there, but just congratulate everybody involved there. I wish Chad was here this morning. I thought he was going to be here for the agenda, but I would recognize Chad, our consultant team, our vendors. I was told by Chad late last week that we're over 160,000 individual plantings on Fort Myers Beach to enhance our beach renourishment. Just try to put your, get your head around, 160,000 individual plantings that will not only beautify our beach, but it will also help retain some of the sand that's been brought to Fort Myers Beach and our beaches. I was actually in Sarasota and Lido Key and Siesta Key, and our beach now, after the renourishment, is unrivaled. So, I commend everybody in their efforts on that front. And then lastly, a month from now, the elections for Vice Mayor and Mayor will occur, and I always like to reduce the drama and create a nice, smooth transition for everyone. So, I'm going to announce that I'm not going to be seeking or accepting the nomination for Vice Mayor, but I, but I think it's just time to pass the baton and give someone else a chance to serve in that position, but I wanted to give my colleagues enough time to kind of think about what they might want to do in the future and how they want to proceed, and so it's not a big dramatic moment a month from now. So, just to help with that contribution or that, that, that transition, if you will, I just wanted to let folks know that that's my intent. So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Counselor King?
Well, I'll have to acknowledge the Vice Mayor on that. You've done an excellent job since I've been on this council, and I appreciate your passion and your hard work for the town of Fort Myers Beach and its residents. So, thank you. Wearing pink today, I know my, some of my online critics don't like it when I wear pink, but I'm proud to wear pink, especially with the rest of these folks up here today and everybody here for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It's something that's touched my family personally. When I hear the phrase warrior women, I think of people like my mother, who was a two-time breast cancer survivor. I think of people like Karen Woodson, who is a very strong woman and a survivor as well, and a friend of ours, Vivian, who's facing a recurrence. We pray for these women. We think of these women, and we'll support these women. It was a great event yesterday at the FMBV FFW Post 10097. Mayor, you did an excellent job. You've really grown and did a, you were more of a co-host than, than a spotlight. So, I think maybe we'll get you your own podcast when you, since you don't have enough to do. We'll call it maybe Mayor in the Morning. Mayor in the Morning. We'll get you a jingle.
The opposite is time slot.
Or maybe we'll call it Hours on the Air, where you can talk about anything as long as it's air-conditioned.
It was hot in there.
But thanks, Beach Talk Radio, and everybody that did a great job in supporting those veterans and saving that post. So, it was just great to be a part of that. And finally, thank you to the Town Manager, the article, the editorial he wrote, I guess, which has been titled by the news press over rebuilding for Fort Myers Beach Elementary, a responsible investment in our future. I can't think of a better article that I've read regarding anything in a long time. You just have a way with words, and I thank you for all your hard work in putting into that as well, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor King. Well, everybody's covered all mine, but I just want to go a little bit farther on the VFW thing yesterday. It was on, I think they raised 75,000 or just over 75,000 to save that VFW. I think it's important that people remember, it's because of their public service and sacrifice that allows us to sit up here and be public servants to our constituents. I just wanted to share a story that really, really resonated with me from one of the gentlemen that came up and spoke, because I think it, it has a lot to do with what we've gone through over the last few years. Obviously, no comparison to what he did, but I think it, it kind of is parallel to it. And he told the story about he had spent five years in captivity, and when he was released finally, I think it was five years and eight months, if I remember correctly, but he had spent a long time. The whole time he was telling the story, he had a smile on his face. I couldn't believe it. He was just telling this story. So, I'm sitting next to him, listening to him, and at the end, his wife got up because he couldn't, he was having a hard time telling the story. So, his wife got up and told the story for him. So, when he was, was finally released and came back stateside, he went to work for a airline, and he was only there for about six months when they went bankrupt, and they, they ended up having to fire him. So, the news people obviously knew his story, came up to him and said, "Well, how do you feel being back now that you just got fired?" And his answer is what stuck with me. He said, "I'm better than I was a year ago." And I thought, wow, that, that, to me, hit home because it was, you know, three years ago to where we are now. It is night and day difference. So, whenever you think you're down or whenever you think, just remember, you're better than you were a year ago. You're better than you were yesterday. All right, I'll move on. That's it. All right. Next, we have Advisory Committee Items, Reports, and Appointments. It is the Cultural and Environmental Learning Center Advisory Board, SELCAD. We have redo this. You want to talk through this, why we're redoing this again? Just to reiterate, I think the last time we had someone that was inadvertently left off the ballot that was supposed to be on the ballot?
Yes, Mayor. Last, last meeting, I guess it was, we left off Carolyn McKeon off the ballot by mistake, and so we're bringing this item back to you with all six applicants on the ballot.
Okay. So, we are to select four of the six people on the ballot.
Okay, so we currently have four positions or seats or vacancies on SELCAD. So, you can vote up to four, and let's start with Jim Aderholt. He voted Natalie Delatorre Salas, Carolyn McCowen, Ellen Vaughn, and Rebecca Werner, John King, Carolyn McCowen, Ellen Vaughn, and Lori Wolfe. There was only three votes on that ballot. Scott Safford, Carolyn McCowen, Ellen Vaughn, Rebecca Werner, and Lori Wolfe. Karen Woodson, Carolyn McCowen, Ellen Vaughn, Rebecca Werner, and Lori Wolfe. And Dan? Mayor, I was trying to decipher the signature here. Natalie Delatorre Salas, Ellen Vaughn, Rebecca Werner, and Lori Wolfe.
And does that reflect your votes?
Scott?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm yes.
Okay. So, with five votes, it's Ellen Vaughn, Carolyn McCowen, Rebecca Werner, and Lori Wolfe, all had a total of four votes individually, and then Natalie Delatorre Salas had two. So, the top votes would go to Carolyn McCowen, Ellen Vaughn, Rebecca Werner, and Lori Wolfe.
So, counsel, for record-keeping purposes, if you could start with a motion to rescind your prior appointments and then a motion to make these appointments.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll go ahead and move to rescind the previous election or ballots and appoint these individuals to the committee.
I'll second that. And Clerk, would you read the, the four folks who were victorious again?
With five votes is Ellen Vaughn, and each with four votes is Carolyn McCowen, Rebecca Werner, and Lori Wolfe.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Counselor King, seconded by Vice Mayor Aderholt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you for your, your service to volunteer. Next, we have Marine Environmental Resource Task Force, MRF, report. Mr. Dave Nussbaum. Starting to become a weekly, a bi-weekly event, Dave.
Turn that button on, Dave.
Turn your, turn your mic on.
Push your button, Dave.
Dave, how many of the 160,000 plants did you personally plant?
None.
Me neither.
Good morning, Town Council, staff. My name is Dave Nussbaum. I'm chairman, newly-elected again Chairman of the MRF Advisory Committee, so you're stuck with me for another year, apparently. And the results of the election also had Jennifer Rusk as the Vice Chair. So, just to advise you on that. And some housekeeping issues, and I apologize that some of this is outdated a little bit. Jennifer was supposed to come in, and due to family reasons, she couldn't give a report. So, I'm going to do a little catch-up for the record, if I can, so please bear with me. At our August meeting, the MRF Committee had a presentation from Elizabeth Fountain, and she was Senior Vice President of Evans Engineering, and she gave us a report on the benefits of concrete wave mitigation walls for the island itself. We asked her numerous questions and determined that there was a real benefit to having those on the island, and we voted four to three to advise the council that you should continue to pursue this avenue, both to assist the property owners and the resiliency of the island on whole. So, for the record, I just wanted to report that. At the following meeting, Chairman Chad Schutz, the Environmental Project Manager for the town, presented a canal dredging project outlining what needed to be done and how to, what avenues the town had as far as paying for the project, and we discussed that in length. We had had numerous residents from the town at several meetings before that talking about how the storm damaged the canals, and they were important to the viability, functionality of the canals as well as the property values, and if there was so much sand in the canal, they couldn't use it at all or even bring boats in. So, we voted as a committee, again, to advise the Town Council on a vote to six to one to continue to pursue Chad's report, determine what the best avenue is. We didn't see any, we didn't want to give you a solution because there were a lot of options in there, and we thought that was something the Town Council needed to review and fine-tune, but there is a demonstrated need to get back and get the canals functioning again as they were prior to Ian. So, that was our, for the record, vote, six to one. At our last meeting, we discussed a couple of things, and just to go on the record, February 4, 2026, is going to be a toxic collection day at Bay Oaks for the town. This is free to all residents. We're going to do a little more advertising on this, but if you have paint that's left over, if you have primer that's left over, anything, you know, paint cleaner, whatever you can, we thought this was a great opportunity with all the construction for people to bring it in. It's free. Lee County will collect it. All you have to do is bring it to the site, and we're going to do a little more advertising, and we think this is a great way to protect the environment and stop people from hopefully not dumping stuff on empty lots, which are all over the island, and this gives them a place where they can get rid of it. We also discussed Arbor Day in April.
Dave, I'm sorry. What date was that for the toxic?
I believe it's February 4, 2026. I remembered it because it's 246.
Whatever it takes, Dave.
Whatever it takes. So, and, and again, we're going to try and get Beach Talk Radio and some other, you know, the Beach Observer and anything else, the town, you know, newspaper, whatever we can do, because we think this is a real benefit to the island. Also, we discussed Arbor Day, which is in April. I don't have the exact date, and we were the beneficiary of some donations from several people, including Alex King. Part of that was used to repurchase additional activity books for the children, but we also voted to take some of that money and put it in because we want to have a, an Arbor Day where we can get the local nurseries to either discount or donate, and we can have an Arbor Day and have residents come in and get a free tree and transplant it on their property. We lost so many trees during the storm, and this would be a good time to, to sponsor an Arbor Day every year to get trees back on the island, to help hold the island, and to bring it back to what was, shield lights from the turtles, so on, so forth. We just need to get more trees on the island, and we think that's a great thing for us to get behind and go through. And finally, and then I'll get out of your hair, I'm here to ask the council if they would approve our nominations for the Mulholland Award. And for those that don't know, the Mulholland Award is an annual award that's given by the town of Fort Myers Beach for outstanding stewardship of the island, and it's named after the first mayor of Fort Myers Beach. So, we had two applicants that came in this year, and we...
Dave, I just, not to correct you, but you were corrected in the past. He technically wasn't the first. He wasn't the first mayor. Anita was the first mayor, but I just wanted to correct it for you.
Okay.
So, you didn't get hammered in social media like you did last time.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Just trying to be proactive, Dave. Just trying to be...
Okay. I have a thick skin. I can take that.
I know. You're from Wisconsin. You've got to...
We had two applicants, and because we have not even recommended an award for the last three years to the Town Council, a lot of us were busy. We decided that with the two applicants, we felt it was worthy that both of them would be considered for nomination by the Town Council. One of the nominations was Bill Bronsord and Mitch Fusick. They're co-founders of Tuna Skin. Tuna Skin was, had their first shop on Fort Myers Beach. They were, they were the founders of Tuna Skin. We were their original store. They have been extremely proactive in the stewardship of the island. They've sponsored numerous beach cleanups over a decade. They've been contributing to keep Lee County beautiful. I think last, their last cleanup, they had over 500 volunteers and took over, I believe, almost three tons of garbage off, off the island and donated $5,000 to keep Lee County beautiful, and that was their 10th year. They're very unsung heroes, and we felt it was, they were deserving the nomination. The other one was submitted, and it was Mary Rose Spalletta. Mary Rose has served nine years, I believe, on the, on the MRF Committee as well as other committees for the town. She's been an active member of Turtle Time, and because we had two and no one, we did not give an award last year or the year before. We felt it was beneficial to recommend that both parties receive the Mulholland Award, but that's for the decision of the council.
Well, I'll tell you what, Dave. I'll happily make a motion to accept the recommendation of the MRF Committee for the members mentioned for the Mulholland Award.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. I'll see you next month.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from the Town Council meeting on October 6, 2025. Is there a motion to approve or any amendments to the Town Council minutes?
Move to approve is printed.
Motion by Counselor King.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the consent agenda that does not have anything on it. So, there is nothing removed. It brings us to our first public hearing. Do you need to swear anyone in before we, because it's legislative? Nancy?
No.
Okay. This is a legislative agenda item and is the first reading in public hearing on Propose Ordinance 25-24. If approved at first reading, a second reading and final adoption hearing will be scheduled for November 17, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. or at another time identified by Town Council. This is an ordinance of the Town Council of Fort Myers, Fort Myers Beach, Florida, adopting an impact fee study dated August 25, 2025, and prepared by Axis Infrastructure and DP Guthrie LLC, amending Article 4 entitled Impact Fees and Chapter 2 entitled Administration of the Town of Fort Myers Beach Code of Ordinance 2.1. Incorporate updated information contained in the referenced Impact Fee Study. 2. Reduce the number of impact fee categories and specific uses. 3. Change the method of calculation of fees for single-family homes per dwelling to square footage range to reflect the typical impact of larger homes. 4. Reduce the amount of fees based on updated population and project expectations. And 5. Providing for an update every four years payable for, from collected impact fees, providing for other clarifications as necessary, providing for conflicts of law, scriven errors, severability, and providing for an effective date. Jason?
Good morning. Jason Green, Community Development. Yes, I'm going to introduce Dwayne Guthrie here from DP Guthrie, our subconsultant. Dwayne's pretty much a foremost expert throughout Florida in impact fees, and we're happy to have him on the team. We'll go through a little bit of a presentation. I would like to also mention that the LPA listened to this item last week. We're under a little bit of a deadline to try to get it done in the next month or so, so that, yes, those meetings are stacked. But, so they had some feedback, and in your agenda item, it should include a little bit of a discussion, of their discussion, since the meeting minutes were not available. So, with that, I will introduce, Dwayne can come up, and we'll do the presentation. Be happy to take your questions after.
Change the slides to left?
Yes.
Okay. Nice to be back. Some of you might remember I was here in January to kick off the impact fee update process. We did a little work session there and talked about some possible changes to the ordinance, and so I think what Jason's referring to, the state keeps tweaking the Impact Fee Act in Florida, and you have basically a year to complete your study once you start it, and so that's what he was referring to. So, you're, you're not right up against the deadline, but you can't just keep kicking the can down the road, or you'll have to start over again. So, yeah, I want to go for this, less than a dozen slides here to give you an idea. Which way? There we go. So, here's our current fees on the left. Let me just kind of give you an idea. The chart is kind of small.
Sir, sir, I'm going to stop you. I'm going to put you on the spot here this morning. Before we get real granular here, which is wonderful, I want you to set the table for folks who might be watching. Talk a little bit about what an impact fee is, what we had before and what we have now. I know, I know that's part of your presentation, but if you could go up 10,000 feet and just kind of give folks the parameters about what we're talking about this morning before we get in too deep, I think it would be helpful for folks.
Happy to. The unique things about impact fees, they're not just a general revenue. It's a, it's a dedicated source of funding just to fund growth-related infrastructure. So, you can't do operating and maintenance costs. You can't replace things that got knocked down in a hurricane. You can expand them. You can add to them, and you can build new infrastructure, but it's growth-related infrastructure. So, that's part of the key thing. It has to go into a special account that your accountants keep track of. You have to do annual reports showing how, what money came in, what money went out, on what specific projects. All those kind of things are required by the Florida Impact Fee Act. And we have now continuing to add some rules and regulations about that, about the update process. Looks like most jurisdictions are probably going to be updating their, their fees every four to five years. There's kind of more rigorous things have come along over time from Florida. There's kind of more rigorous things have come along over time from the Florida Impact Fee Act. And so that's the general overview. They're tied to development activities, so we typically collect those at the time a building permit is issued, and it's tied to impact-related or development that generates an impact on infrastructure. So all those kinds of things are, are consideration. I'll give you a overview of what you have now and the general changes that we'll be going into. Any other question before I go on?
That's a great start. Thank you very much.
Okay. If you look at the, the chart that I've got there on the left, the land use categories are listed down the left side. At the top, the ones that are shaded, that kind of orangey tan color are the residential categories, and then below that, you see non-residential categories. There's roughly a dozen of those non-residential categories. We're going to consolidate it down to two general categories, basically retail, restaurant, eating, drinking places are all one category. So if you sell anything, an item, you sell food, drinks, all that, you're in that first category. And then basically everything else, all your other services are in the other category. So offices, business services like banks, real estate offices, lawyers, all those kinds of things would be in that other, other category. There's a lot of categories that you see up there today that kind of tells me a lot about the way the fees were done before. The Fort Myers Beach fees were very much correlated with the county fees, and that's why I think you have the, the kind of odd regional parks and community parks. You see the two columns there on the right. Most municipalities don't have that kind of distinction. That's kind of a legacy from the way the county fees were done. And also, if you look at the numbers on the transportation fees and the categories, those are categories that came out of the Institute of Transportation Engineers, trip generation rates. They, every, every four to five years, the IT publishes a new set of trip generation rates. And so your previous transportation fees were kind of like the old school. We're going to do these based on theoretical, more formula-driven trip generation rates and the need for additional vehicle capacity. So how many vehicles can you put on, on arterial? You know, what's your level of service standards? Those are all the kind of inputs that went into those first early generation impact fees. In urban areas, we're, we're transitioning to what we're calling mobility fees or multimodal transportation fees. We're more concerned about moving people, not just moving vehicles. So it's, it's all modes, pedestrians, biking, transit, and vehicles all together. So that's kind of the, one of the big changes in your update of the fees this time around.
And that, excuse me, that, that includes water ferries as well for transportation?
All modes.
Right. Thank you.
And so that, and we'll look at specific capital improvements in just a minute, and you'll, you'll see that very much. So also, you can kind of see there's distinctions in the, like the differences between a fast food restaurant and a regular sit-down standard restaurant. Well, the old impact fees were just done on trip generation rates, like a traffic counter was across the driveway, so it was just counting vehicles coming and going. The old impact fee studies didn't account for pass-by trips because you, you know, when you go driving somewhere, you're not going to go out of your way to go to a fast food restaurant. You're just going to stop one along the way. So to be, to be a little more fair or equitable or proportionate, it's the key word in the Florida Impact Fee Act, we've added adjustment factors for pass-by trips and those kinds of things, and we switched more to people-driven multimodal fees, especially for urban areas like yours. So we're going to consolidate those last two categories. It's just going to be called Parks and Recreation. We're not going to call them regional and community parks anymore, and we're going to use the term multimodal transportation for your transportation fees. So any, any questions on those before we go on?
I wonder, if I could, go back again up a few thousand feet?
Sure.
For, just again, for folks who are watching, who, who pays these impact fees? In other words, if you're remodeling your home after, after the storm, do you pay? If you're replacing your home after, after the storm, do you pay? If you're enhancing the size of your home, do you pay? Who, who pays and how does, just kind of give an overview of how, how it works, both for residential and for businesses?
Sure. And one of the misnomers of kind of a common thing with impact fees, like a lot of people get up and kind of testify that we want to stick it to the developers and make them pay more. Well, generally, in a normal market economy, impact fees are passed along to the end user. So the homeowner, the renter, the business that occupies the building, those are the people that ultimately pay the impact fees. Most of the time, the developers will just pass those costs along. And that's one of the reasons why Florida requires a 90-day effective date. So even after you adopt the fees, there's a 90-day wait period before the new development will charge, be subject to the different rate, the new rate. So there's those kinds of things that help with the transitioning. And then also in Florida, we have things now, we have phase-in requirements. It's not going to be applicable to you because we're recommending the fees to come down. But there's all those kinds of things that keep the, basically developers usually from having to pay those fees, they'll get passed along to the end user. Now, as far as how we're doing the fees, now they're done just by type. If you're just replacing a single-family house with a single-family house, you don't have to pay anything additional. But what's happened in a lot of our beach communities, we have older, smaller homes, two, three bedrooms, you know, less than 2,000 feet, square feet of living space or climate-controlled space. A lot of those are being replaced with multi-story units that might be even used for vacation rentals or those kinds of things. They might be two, three times as big as the, the current house. Well, going to a fees by size, if that happens, you can set a threshold as, as when you want that to cut in, but if you build a much bigger house, then you're going to pay the difference between what was there and what the new one would be. And that helps to cover some of the, the additional costs from those things, especially vacation rentals, because that's a, a big deal on most beach communities. So that's one of the reasons why we're, we're recommending that we go to size thresholds for the residential fees, and you'll, we're not concerned about type. And the problem with the type approach is it gets very complicated in that you're mixing the type of structure with ownership patterns. So timeshares versus condos. They look the same, but they're owned differently, and we don't have to worry about that anymore if we just do it by size thresholds. It'll be just based on the average size of the unit in that building.
So how does it, because if I'm not mistaken, if you go to, say, like a, a triplex or quadplex, that then goes into the commercial bucket, right, versus the residential?
No. If it's a living unit, it's a residential unit, and you pay the fees that you'll see are per unit. So if it was a triplex, you'd be three times the average size of those in that.
So it doesn't, as long as it's a residential home, whether it's a triplex, fourplex, whatever?
Correct.
Yes.
It would still fall under the residential versus the commercial?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Yep.
So, so on the business side, if a business comes back again, rebuilds, is it also then determined by size?
Yes. And the fees that you'll see on the proposed update are per thousand, the same structure that we have now, it's per thousand square feet of building. So you don't just pay a fat, a flat fee per retail space. It's based on the size of that space. So if you, if you pay, if you have a 10,000 square foot building and 100,000 square foot building, the, the larger one would pay per thousand square feet the same rate, but the amount would be 10 times as much.
Do they get, do they get grandfathered in what they had before?
Correct.
Okay. So it's just additional space that they get charged for?
Correct.
Okay.
And most communities will have a timeframe specified as to how long or some point in time as to, you know, to determine when, when there was an existing structure. So that's one of the things that we'll make sure we're on the same wave with attorney as you guys talk about that. And also on the size thresholds, that can be, like, if you, you don't want to nickel and dime somebody if they want to just add a, a small addition to their house. So some communities will set a 10 or 20% kind of a threshold that if you don't expand the, the house by that threshold, then you don't have to pay a fee because you hate the, you know, somebody wants to add on just a little bit to have them pay an impact fee. But it's, it's entirely up to you. That's a local decision, and communities will have different, either they'll say any addition you pay, or they'll have some threshold so that they don't have to worry about it if there's a small addition.
So I, I hate to pin you down on this, but it's just, it's interesting to me that, so for example, a, a proposal that, like Seagate, where there were, it was an RV community, but they, when they bought the land, they were entitled 141 spots. Do they get grandfathered for the 141, or do they start from scratch in terms of the impact fee? How, how would it work from a practical standpoint in a situation like Seagate?
Yeah, there's a process that we, again, Jason Green, there's a process that we go through that evaluates what was on site and, I guess, had a right or was built. We went through that process with Margaritaville as an example, and then you, you treat those as kind of credits, and then we do the math on what the proposed use is and do all that fee, and then we do the math between the two and whatever the difference is, is what ultimately gets paid. So we sit with, we, we create kind of a form for each developer that shows what all their credits are and what all their charges are, and we make sure that they agree that they're getting the credits that they're supposed to.
So you have like a formula that you put forth?
Well, it's, it's based on what was on site, right? So in using, I was going to try, I'll try to get that out to you guys.
Let's maybe use the Neptune for an example. I think they've doubled the number of rooms. So it would be the, all the new rooms?
Right. So in a case where it was a single building with 50 rooms, and you're building a single building or two buildings with 100 rooms, that's a pretty simple math to do. You get a credit for the 50 rooms at the rate that's in the, in the adopted schedule. Something like Margaritaville, where they had a multiple uses on site. They had some duplexes, they had-
Before you, before you go on, go back to what you just said there. So if you, is it based, I'm a little confused, because is it based on the number of rooms or the size of the rooms also? So if they had 50 units, they'd get a credit for the 50 units, but if those units were 400 square feet, but now they're 800 square feet, do they pay the difference on the, on the size of the square footage, even though they had the 50 units?
We, we have a hotel, motel, lodging kind of category. Those are per unit, no size applicable.
Okay.
The residential units that are designed for, you know, have full kitchens and all that type of thing, those are by size thresholds.
So in most of your residential buildings, you're most likely going to have similar sizes, right? You're going to have a condo building or apartment building. Most of those units are going to be around the same size as each other. So it's, it's a pretty simple calculation to do. So let's say you had a building of 100 apartment or condo units that were 1,100 square feet each, and then your, your rebuild comes back and you're doing, you've approved double that amount. They get a credit for what they had there, and then you get charged for the new increase based on the new schedule. So it, it's only for the new development. So you always get a credit for what was there.
I assume it's a bit complicated. What do you, how do you, how do you handle a, an entity that was previously an RV park? Is there a, is there a credit for an RV, or is it based upon the units? Or how, how do you do that?
Well, some of those were not just RVs. Some of those, there's examples of they were fixed modular or, or mobile-type homes. And so, yeah, we would go, we would go through each of those lots, try to look at the records. That one's going to be a little bit probably complicated and time-consuming, but we go through everything that was on site and legal and give them the credit for that based on the unit where it would fall, based on the category that falls into in the, in the schedule.
So in essence, it's anything that's new and additional to what was there before?
Correct. So one of the things that's in, again, this is also a text amendment to the Land Development Code. There's a recommendation to move from the five years to seven years so that once the demo permit essentially, or when something's removed from the property, that's when that triggers that seven year, currently five years, we're recommending that you go to seven years, mostly because of the storm. We're already three years in. Only two more years left for people to maintain that credit. It's going to be a tight window for some of them to rebuild. So we're recommending for now you go to seven years to give them a little bit more room to recover.
Thank you. And then just a quick question on the, on the retail side of it. So you're, you build something back that wasn't retail before, that it has now retail use, say it's 10,000 square feet. Does the property owner get assessed that impact fee based on the 10,000 square feet? Or did I hear you say that it's based on, if they break it into 10, 1,000 square foot? Is it each, each section then that would have a prorated rate based on the 10,000 square feet, or how does that work?
No, so it's, it's the building permit side. So when the permit is picked up, essentially, they pay the impact fee.
For the overall?
Yeah, so whoever's developing the site, whoever's constructing it, they're, some, an entity, an owner will be responsible for that entire impact fee upfront.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. So, and to your point, though, to change, we also have dealt with, and one of the ways, this is going to make it easier for us to do by having fewer categories, is also when you change uses within a, in a unit or a space, we're supposed to charge the difference in the increase in the impact fee. So if you went from something that was a lower impact fee to a higher impact fee based on this current schedule, we, we're supposed to charge you when you change the use. And this will kind of standardize all that and make that happen a lot less and make it easier for us to track and not have to charge people just for changing uses in an existing shell or in an existing unit.
So when you say it's implemented when you change the use, is that, I mean, I thought, I heard at some point through this conversation that we, this is months ago, that you would pay the impact fee when you apply for the building permits or something like that? Is that right?
Correct. So as an example, I'm trying to see which ones are lower and higher here. If you had a restaurant standard, you built a, a building for a restaurant, and then it got changed to, what's a higher one? A bank. Restaurant, it was built as a restaurant, and it gets changed to a bank. Traditionally, we would take that change of use and apply the difference in the fee to that, to that building because of the change of use and collect the difference in the impact fee. So if it was a new build, you would charge them the impact fee. Or existing and they remodeled for a restaurant, we wouldn't change anything, restaurant to restaurant. But then we've had this happen where it changed to a bank or something else, we have to charge the difference. We have less categories that do that now, so it's going to be simpler to, to track.
Is the money substantial enough to create perverse incentives? In other words, are you punished if you, if you, if you develop something on a brand-new piece of land that did not, was not developed before? Or, or are you better off buying a piece of property that had something there before so you get that grandfathered a credit, if you will? Does it create any perverse incentives, or is the fun, is the money not enough to create perverse incentives?
Generally, the impact fees are relatively minor. I mean, we're, in residential, for instance, if it, you know, we're spending $200 a square foot and they're, they're getting, you know, charged $2,000, you know? The math is usually not enough to, to make any influence on the market. And especially on, on the non-residential side, it's more location-driven as to, you know, what the highest investors use for that property. It's going to be very location-independent, so, I mean, dependent. So I think generally, the impact fees don't make a big sway on the market.
And it sounds like, and I want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like what you're proposing today makes this consistent with other communities in the county, at other counties. It's, it sounds like we're becoming much more standardized with surrounding areas. Is that a fair generalization?
Yes. And I would also say, I think we talked about this at the workshop and stuff, is it also almost incentivizes those other uses. So you're, and I was looking at this, this morning, the medical office, it, it really kind of almost standardized, or makes it easier and cheaper to develop that use, which I think is something that you guys have mentioned that you want to encourage that.
Yeah.
So we've, I think there's some encouragement of, through these fees by standardizing them into fewer categories.
That's good news. Thank you.
You were leaning in like you wanted to say something.
I just, I still have a question on using the Seagate example. So I know that you get a credit for what was there, and you have to go through and figure out all the intricacies, intricacies of that. But so in Seagate, and I cannot remember off the top of my head how many units they were actually talking about, but I know that some of them, many of them maybe were much more square footage than obviously an RV. So does the square footage then come into play in that kind of development, or is it strictly the number of units?
So yes and no. It depends on the type, and it depends on the, the setup. So I think I'd have to look at Seagate again. It's been a while, but I think they have certain types of units in a building, and then another building has different types of units. So it's going to be different. Some of them may be resort hotel style that fall under lodging. There's probably some residential buildings, and we'll look at that square footage. They probably have a few units that are larger than others, but for the most part, residential has a tendency to have two or three types of units within them. And so we'll just, I don't, I don't know exactly how we're going to do it. We're going to have to look at it, but we'll play it by ear, but it's, it's going to be based on both square footage and unit type. It goes to the use, and those mixed projects are the ones that are going to be a little bit more challenging to, to do the math on, but it'll, it's not too difficult.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And so, so just another odd kind of application of this would be the Arches project, which was a functioning marina. And then you basically turn it into a massive hotel with retail. It sounds like most of that would be considered new. Is that, is that how you would calculate it?
Yeah, so we'll do the math on what the square footage of Marina, warehousing, whatever was there, whatever that, in the schedule would calculate to, and that's their credit, and then the new is the new.
But those warehouses are massive. What would they, what would the credit for a warehouse equate to? Ballpark.
Adopted chart, right? So whatever we adopt here, right? So what, you use the current, the chart that you have adopted at the time. So this is the current one, but we would, if we adopted a new one, I guess we would use the, the non-residential category for the credit.
Convert everything to dollars.
Right. We convert everything to dollars based on that square footage. And our, whatever fee, fee schedule's in place, when you do the credit, that's when you do the math. We don't go back to an old impact fee study.
Yeah. And I'm trying to get a sense, Jason, through some of these questions, is the fiscal impact to the town-
Sure.
Do you get a sense, just, just as you've done your research this last year, and you obviously know where a lot of the new projects are, do you see the town experiencing a significant infusion of, 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 of impact fees? Or would it be enough to be a game changer? What, how do you, can you give us some kind of a rough estimate as to what you're speculating at this point, or is it too early?
Well, no, I mean, I, I think, it depends on how you look at it. So I'll let Dwayne hit that. Again, I tried to address that a little bit at the LPA and maybe missed the mark. But again, I think Dwayne opened with this, is impact fees are here to, to pay for the capital projects that are created by the impact of growth. Right? And so it's, it's not gonna pay a hundred percent of projects. It's gonna pay for a proportionate share related to growth.
No, I get that, but I'm just, but having said that-
Right.
Just from a practice, Joe's over here salivating. Should he be salivating, or should he be-
Because it can't go anywhere other than their, their account.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll show you the exact dollar mouse in just a minute. You'll see him.
Alright, sounds good, thank you.
It's in the millions, but it's only a percentage of the total, so.
I try to, when I get asked about impact fees a lot, it's a lot, it's very difficult for a lot of people to understand that don't have the benefit of talking with people like you. And I always try to give an example using ball fields. So say you have two ball fields, and a development comes in that is gonna increase the impact of the use of that ball field. You could use those impact fees to build new ball fields, but not repair or add on to the existing ball fields. You have to basically use the fees for the impact that is created by the development that is happening. Is that the easiest way to, I mean, that's the easy way I've found to say it.
Correct. But you might add lights, which would give you more, you know, use at night.
Expand the uses.
And so that would add capacity. So, but generally, you just can't replace what's there or make it better, or just, you know, replace aside and that kind of thing. You generally need to expand capacity. So allow people to have better use, like if you, if you did lights, it would allow them to use it at night. So that would be an expansion of the capacity. Okay? Alright, let's go ahead and look at what, how we're gonna calculate the fees. The chart on the left with the blue headings there, you see the two categories, parks and transportation. We're gonna do the fees townwide, the one uniform schedule for the entire town. For parks and recreation, we're, we're gonna use peak population to allocate the cost. So it's gonna be the year-round folks, the seasonal folks that live in housing units, and the seasonal visitors and hotel motels. So that all goes into your peak population, because it's a big difference between your year-round folks and that peak. And so because we're, we're sizing or accommodating seasonal population, we're gonna use that in the peak population to do the math. And then on the transportation side, we're gonna allocate the cost based on functional population, which has to do with how many people and jobs are in the community, but with some adjustments for commuting pattern, because we, we kind of know how many people live and work here, how many people work off the island, and how many inflow commuters you have. So we do some adjustments to kind of make it proportionate as possible. We call that functional population. There's a table in the report. I didn't put it in the slides, a little too, too geeky, but basically, we split costs between residential and non-residential. And then on the residential side, we allocate the cost per person. And then on the non-residential sides, we, we use the inbound primary trips to allocate the cost between resident, retail and all other services.
If I could put our, our assistant town manager on the spot. So this capital improvement plan, how does that merge with the strategic plan? Are you, are you working in concert with this? Is this, is this impacting your, your strategic process?
So the strategic plan through USF and Angela Christ took into consideration all of the resident impact and the surveys and the comments that they received through that. And we did send it over to Access Group when they were looking at the comp plan. So they also had the resident comments when they come forth with the comp plan as well.
So, so this will impact the strategic plan, and your strategic plan will impact this particular plan?
I would say the strategic plan would capture some of the projects in the way forward, whereas this would support that strategic plan in terms of some additional funding that could come forth.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And generally, your strategic plans are a little shorter-range timeframe. This is a ten-year CIP, and the categories are really trying to be kind of balancing between giving people enough idea of how the money's gonna be spent, but not, you know, tying it down to a, a specific spot or a specific year. So let's just run through them, and I think you'll get a better feel for it. At the top, there's the, the improvements for parks and recreation. And you'll see there's additional facilities at your four existing beach parks, and that's a five million dollar total cost. And then gross share, what impact fees are gonna pay for is, is twenty percent. And that's based on your projections for residential development over the next ten years, the additional residential development, and that's what we can reasonably attribute to, to new growth. So out of that five million dollar line item, impact fees will pay for a million dollars. So it is a significant amount of money, but you still have to come up with the other four million. So that's the, kind of the trade-off there you need to be aware of.
On the park side, are we limited to improving existing parks? Or could we actually purchase a pocket park if there was land available in part with some of these funds?
You could, yes, you could use that for an additional park. But the beach access is the same way. We've got twenty-four sites now that, you know, which is a great number for along the beach. You can make improvements to those by adding parking, landscaping, lighting, boardwalks, you know, whatever makes sense, bike racks, anything that adds, makes that more effective, more capacity for people to use that, know it's there. Any of those kind of improvements would be eligible. So of those twenty-four, that's a hundred thousand to each site, but the fees will only pay for twenty percent of that.
So the town's cost portion of it, if, does it matter how the town secures those funds? And what I'm trying to say is whether it's your grants, whether it's your appropriations, does that change the twenty percent number at all?
No. And that-
That number stays static?
Yeah, yeah. And so that, we're counting on you to have grant money, or tax money, or sales tax money. Any source of revenue would work for the other non-impact fee share. Okay? And then the last line item is the recreation campus improvements, a million dollars. Again, that's just kind of a, a general line item. You could, you know, make the details during your annual capital improvement budgeting process of how you, exactly you wanna spend that money. So of that, you know, eight point four million dollar capital improvement program, we're paying for one point six eight, I think it is, out of the impact fees, twenty percent. Similar on the, on the multimodal transportation improvements at the bottom. We've got additional bike lanes, we've got multimodal trails, and we've got sidewalk connectors. Again, we're trying to focus on things that are gonna benefit the entire community. So we don't wanna just do a sidewalk on a residential street. We wanna try to focus on sidewalks, on main streets, or that, that connect in, in the downtown, your Times Square, I think is what you guys call your downtown kind of area. Anything like that in a commercial area that where you want people to park once and walk around, or not park at all, just bike or walk there. Any of those kind of connectivity things would be eligible for impact fees.
Even, so obviously, our main road is this terrible Boulevard that's owned by the county. Would that, these impact fees couldn't be used on that because it's an entity owned by the county? Is that a safe-
Well, it, there could very well be a local share to those improvements. They might ask you to participate, or, you know, add, like for the bus stops, you might wanna make those more user-friendly, but with shading and lighting and landscaping and those kind of things. If, if that's a local cost, then you could pay for that.
So as part of the whole traffic light synchronization pre-storm that we were doing with what they're doing at the bottom of the bridge, and then the lights that were over on Old San Carlos and all that, that was, I believe that light originally was paid with impact fees. The, our portion of that project was to contribute and pay for that, that traffic light. And so that came out of, of impact fees, because that helps with the capacity and the flow of traffic.
And then, I'm assuming, in having conversations with you, that you couldn't use these impact fees for maybe potentially a mitigation wall, but you could potentially use them for a bike lane or bike lanes on that mitigation wall?
Sure. Yes, if you're creating recreation capacity and opportunities, or, or transportation. Same thing with, I go, we go through this with a lot of communities where road and transportation projects are in one bucket or department, and then recreation is in another, and you're seeing those things overlap more. And I'm encouraging other communities to make sure they overlap, so it's not just parks and rec building a trail, and transportation building a road or sidewalk. Sometimes that sidewalk is the trail. So mix those recreation and transportation funds to complete a project, whether it's grant or impact fees to go towards that. So sometimes things serve a dual purpose.
So the last line item on the mobility transportation table is the ferry access facilities. Proposed five of those. So you'll have a million dollars from impact fees that'll, you can use towards that. And that, that coding, the R2P2 is, you know, that refers to this process where you guys went through in the recovery resiliency partnership project. And that planning effort, you've already approved, and that's where those five ferry access points are. Any other questions before we go on? I'll dive into the details of the fee calculations. For parks and recreation, we've taken that one point six eight million from the other table, carried it over here, and we're gonna allocate it to the projected increase in peak population over the next ten years to get a cost per person. And then we're gonna multiply that by the number of people per unit, and you'll see the different multipliers there. But basically, as you get bigger, we have demographic data, and we have the building permit data that kind of match those two up. The, so we knew, knew the size of your units, and that's how we came up with those thresholds. At some point, it just kind of caps off. It's not a straight-line linear curve, the relationship between size and number of people. It, it curves over a log curve or flattens out. And so, you know, after some point, it doesn't really make any difference. So it's, the top one is four thousand or more square feet of living space. So even if you built a, you know, six thousand square foot McMansion, it would still pay that, that amount. And then the last one is lodging, and that is just per room. And you can see on these, the lodging doesn't change much at all. It's a drop of fifty-four dollars. The other ones change more. And I think that the main reason for that is the difference in methodologies. Now we're allocating things per, per person with seasonal population. The old one was just based on traffic generation rates and, you know, vehicle, kind of moving vehicles around. And, and, and while in parks, it was, it was just averages by size. And so there was an average for all multifamily, and average for all single family. And, you know, single family varies quite a bit from very small kind of starter home, more in the thousand square foot scale up to the very large units. So this way, it's a little more equitable or proportionate to the actual, you know, impact based on the size of units you're, you're making. And we don't have to worry about the, the variations in types, because there will be some attached units that are gonna fall, you know, in more in the middle categories. They could be well above two thousand square feet, even though there are attached condos, that kind of thing. Now they'll pay according to the size, and not just per unit. Alright, let's look at the numbers on the transportation fees. If we, again, the number at the very top is the carryover from the previous slide of the two point nine, almost three million dollar capital improvement program that's gonna be funded by growth. This one, we split between residential and non-residential using the functional population calculations that I talked about. So sixty-eight percent of the cost is gonna be paid by residential development, and thirty-two percent by non-residential development. And then we do the math to allocate it per person or per inbound vehicle trip. And you can see the same multipliers there for the residential. And on the bottom, the non-residential ones are, those are inbound primary vehicle trips that differentiate between retail and all other non-residential. And on these, the, the drops are a little less significant on the non-residential. At the bottom, you'll see very minor change of roughly five hundred dollars per thousand square foot. Some people have a hard time relating per thousand square foot, so if you kind of wanna think three decimal point, points. And so that would be just a drop of fifty cents per foot, if that helps you to kind of relate to that. Because a lot of times, people think of per foot cost when they think of building. So the decrease is fifty cents per foot, you know? So it's not a huge amount. And on the residential side, those are, I mean, the, the amounts are per unit again. So the differences are based on the, the categories that you have. So you have multifamily are basically the ones at the top that are shown now. It's two thousand and fifty-nine dollars. The single family is the ones in the middle there. I've used the bold lines to kind of help you see that. Your current rounds are two thousand nine hundred and seventy-one per unit. And so the, the decrease will vary by size. And then the change on the lodging is per unit. So it goes from eight hundred nineteen dollars today to two thousand two hundred and thirty-seven. So that's, those are your changes. Any questions on these? Okay, a couple more slides and we're done. So here's an administrative fee that we're gonna add, the Florida Impact Fee Act. Back in the old days, people did percentages. And that's not allowed anymore. You have to estimate your actual cost, and you can have a fee for the, covers the cost of administering the impact fees. So at the top, you'll see that we've put in forty thousand dollars for staff time and eighty thousand dollars for consultant studies, so that, you know, that our work is, you know, covered by the impact fees. And so it's, you know, relatively minor amount we've allocated to the projected increase in development over the next four years, because generally, the new impact fee requirement is that you, you have to use data within the last four years. And so most times, people kind of try to update, start to update the impact fees at that four-year window, and then, you know, give yourself a year to get it done, and get it implemented or approved. So roughly a five-year cycle is what I think most communities will be going to. No longer can sit on your impact fees for twenty years, that kind of thing. It's just not gonna be allowed. You'll get challenged, and you'll, you'll lose easy on those. So you gotta keep your impact fees updated. So you can see those, the administrative charges. And then here's the total, all put together on one chart. So the proposed total is the blue, with the blue font there and the current fees, and you can kind of see the changes. Again, the less dramatic drops on the non-residential side, those are pretty much, pretty similar. But on the residential side, we are showing decreases, thousand to two hundred thousand dollars per unit.
I could, just, since we have everybody here. Will, Frankie, Jeff, Joe. Obviously, this is gonna impact all of your worlds. Do, will, will somebody in your shop, Frankie, determine what these fees are? Will it be in Joe's shop? Will it be Jeff? Will, will it be a combination? Will, have you thought through how you're gonna, to?
Yeah, it starts in community development. And then, community development will, you know, have a discussion with the community services department, if, you know, if there's a crossover or, or it's solely in one area or another. And then the discussions about how to apply that, of course, and consultations with Joe in, in the proper usage of that. But I'll, I'm happy to let either Frankie or Jeff expound on that, if you guys want.
I guess what I'm trying to, will it require an additional person? Or will you just do this, absorb this internally?
No. No additional.
Alright, no additional person, just for, because people couldn't hear. No, no additional staffer would be required. They can absorb the, the impact of the implementation of the new impact fees internally.
Right. We, we do that now through planning and building staff, essentially. And so I, I don't project it to be any more costly.
I just thought, with all, with all the excitement post E and, there's gonna be a lot more activity than there was pre E, and so I just was curious as to the impact on staff.
Yeah, it should be about the same that we're doing right now.
Okay.
And it's covered in the fees to be able to cover for that. And honestly, you'll be able to see that more on an annual basis. So the idea is, if you're doing it every four to five years, So the idea is if you're doing it every four to five years, every year you should be adopting a five-year CIP as part of your budget. And every year, you're rolling a new fifth year into there in those projects. You see that progress going from the fifth year projected to a first year when it gets actually done, design, construction. So as we move towards that system and implement that consistently, you'll be able to see this and how it relates to in five years from now, when we update this, what do we want to change? What do we want to add? What part of that 10-year list gets modified, right? So you're going to be on top of this, I think, on an annual basis essentially.
Thank you.
So that concludes our presentation. I'd be glad to answer any more questions if you have them. We have the study that is available. Hopefully, it can get published on the website if it's not already done. And then also, you can publish the slides if it might be easier for people to relate to whatever you think is appropriate. And our contact information is there. We're glad to help with any of these kind of questions. We routinely help communities with the oddball things that come up. Any impact fee, any builder or developer, when they go to pull a building permit, if they think, they always have the option of asking for an independent study or doing an independent study and showing why they're different or why they're unique. So that's something just administrative, we try to do to avoid any kind of legal challenges and work it out, the details of if you have unique developments. So that's kind of a common thing that's done. But hopefully, this covers, you know, 99% of all the building permits that come to the door.
So what I've handed out to you is basically just-
Before we go on, I'm not sure how to actually address this. I've tried to bring it up before in my meetings with town staff. And this is my learning disability problem. But one of the communities in Lee County has gone away from impact fees into mobility fees. I'm not sure why they would do that because basically, I don't understand it. But my understanding is we also have mobility fees that we do collect. But apparently, it's not something that we're doing a very good job on. I don't know if, I thought that's what I've heard you understand in the past, is that we're not doing a very good job with it or it doesn't fit or, I don't want to put words in your mouth Frankie, but.
So this is a mobility fee? It always has. And I'll let Dwayne describe the difference between.
Well, there's a couple of unique things in state law that they've added an extra. If you use the term mobility fee, then it has to actually, the plan, I mean, the mobility plan that goes with the mobility fee has to be adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. So there's just an extra administrative step there, our requirement. The math, you've transitioned basically to mobility fees. We're now doing the fees based on capital improvements. We're allocating the cost more not for moving just vehicles but for moving people. So we're calling it a multimodal transportation fee. But the math basically is a mobility fee, like Jason was saying. It's just a packaging thing. The state gives you either option. If you want to call it a mobility fee, then I'll have to add the plan into the comprehensive plan process. It's an extra step. Most communities aren't wanting to go there. But if you read the requirements and the law, you are an urban area. Your types of improvements that we've identified are the types of improvements that you would see in a mobility plan. So we're just, it's more of the semantics of we're calling it a transportation fee, a multimodal transportation fee. But we've transitioned away from just moving vehicles to moving people, and the allocation is like a mobility fee.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. And I apologize if I put words in people's mouth or misrepresented them. Thank you.
Yeah, those words get thrown around in different places, I understand. So what I handed out to you is essentially a previous project calculation, just so you can see how we did the math and calculation by category. And these, I would say, properties that are bought and consolidated and they have mixture of uses on them are a little bit more challenging. But also resorts and places with multiple uses, that's one thing we haven't talked about yet. So if you have a hotel, but you also have a restaurant, and you also have some other items on the property, all of those uses will be charged in impact fee individually. It's not just per the rooms. It's all the other parts of it have to be charged also. So this is an example of Margaritaville, how we did the commercial credits. And this was, these were all an analysis of all the things that were on their properties prior to their improvements. And then the second page essentially is the math on the new development. And at the bottom of that second page, I gave you, there's a totals of new subtotal, credit subtotal, and then a net total. And that'll give you an idea of each of those columns of transportation, the regional, the community park, and we also did the fire and school for them. So that's how the math got done on that. Obviously, with less categories, it'll be simpler for us and less accounts. But it would be done similar for any project moving forward based on adopted categories.
So Jason, going forward, as Fort Myers Beach rebuilds after a horrific storm three years ago, as we grow and rebuild, it appears from this data that you've handed out that the Lee County School District will benefit from that rebuilding of Fort Myers Beach. Is that a fair characterization?
Well, they've adopted their own impact fee. It's separate from yours. We just agree to collect it on their behalf and pass it on.
So good community citizens like poor Dawn, who's been waiting patiently out there, as they contribute and rebuild their properties on Fort Myers Beach, they'll be contributing to the Lee County School District as they rebuild and rebuild Fort Myers Beach. Is that a fair?
Correct. Because, yes, the school district has an adopted fee.
So as the school, as Fort Myers Beach rebuilds and prospers of our own volition, the Lee County School District will benefit whether they have a school here or not. Is that fair?
Yes, so any additional unit, correct, they would pay a fee for that based on their fee schedule and their adopted ordinance.
Very interesting.
Good gig if you can get it.
So anyway, you can see the numbers there and how we did the math. We give the credits in the new required, and we'll do the same. So if you have any questions about that.
Jason, usually when it's, typically do, the staff obviously does their analysis like you just handed us. Does the non-commercial or the residential, the commercial or residential user do their own study and you compare? Or do they take yours and then review it? Is there, do they challenge it if they feel that it's not accurate? Or how does that work?
So I would say absolutely with the more complicated projects, we have shared those with the property owner or applicant or whatever to make sure that they had an opportunity. So Margaritaville, absolutely. We did the math, we sent it to them. They looked at it and reviewed it and confirmed and said, yeah, we agree with your assessment or we don't. Or we think you had a credit, you had a 1,176 square feet, but we really had 2,000 square feet of retail. And here's the records of that. Like, we will have and do have those conversations with complicated projects. Single-family homes or what have you are a little bit different. They're much more straightforward. Either there was a house there or there wasn't.
And this will be easier now that it's going to square footage versus dwelling units. So the square footage is easy to find from property records is what was there before.
Yes, in theory, the number of units gets a little challenging sometimes. We've had that conversation in the past of what's grandfathered in. But we also have that process ongoing when people come to rebuild. They say we had three units. We only had proof that they had two. You got to go through the records. Once that's established, then the replacement part makes it easy because it's usually like for like on the residential side.
Scott, any question for these guys?
I just want to follow up on John's question. I know he asked you to, Joe, you're always my guy. Do you could take a look at these numbers? Do the numbers look, their projections look pretty reasonable? Do you feel comfortable? What's your take? I hate to put you on the spot, but I always do.
If I can add on to that question, because my question was going to be similar to that. You have projections, right? You can only project based on previous and what you think. Is there a path at the town? Are we locked in at these numbers? Say, two, three years from now, all of a sudden, these numbers are way off because the population growth has gone way up. Can these be reevaluated again? Does that be a whole nother study?
Yeah, that's absolutely why you should do it every four to five years, is to make sure that those trends are accurate. Or has there been a seismic shift in what policy, comp plan, right? A new comp plan that allows, forgive me for saying this, you adopt a comp plan that allows three times as much as you previously did, right? That changes the opportunity in the build-out scenario of the community. You're not doing that. But as an example, you would want to reevaluate. That's why all these things, all these studies should be consistently reevaluated every so often, and they all feed into each other. So they support the strategic plan. The comp plan is supposed to be re-analyzed every seven years. These get done every four to five years. They all work together. So yes, you're always reevaluating.
Joe Anzik, Finance Director. And I would just have to say, I have to defer to their expertise since I don't have expertise in this area and their, on their reputation. Looking at it, at the face of it, it seems reasonable. I don't have concerns in that way. I am concerned about how we're going to come up with our town share. But other than that, I mean, it seems very reasonable. And I appreciate all the work that went into it, especially in collecting the information regarding the capital improvement plan.
Okay, fair enough.
Dan, do you want to follow up on?
No, I think I kind of expected that that's what Joe would say, but.
Just want to get on the record.
Yeah, no. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, and every year, your capital improvement plan may change, right? Your five-year outlook. That's why you evaluate that five-year plan every year. And that, again, that, oh, hey, we found a new project we need to do. Well, then this can be updated to reflect that.
Nancy, I guess my question to you would be, this can't correlate into Senate Bill 250 or anything like that. So say we set this impact fee now, and we all of a sudden see an influx, markets change, things happen, and you see this influx of development that's happening that's going to correct this. Is there anything that they can come back and say, well, you're now changing, we made a decision to move forward based on these impact fees, but now you're changing them because the market has changed and your population has changed? Does any of that have any legal ramifications to the town?
Well, they could always raise the argument. However, you know, the standard right now, and there are some legislative proposals already regarding SB 180 that basically, as you're aware, the restriction is if it's unduly burdensome or unreasonable, which are terms that have yet to be defined. What you're proposing here doesn't appear to create an issue regarding those standards. What happens in the future, we don't know. But if the market changes and there are valid reasons to change it, as long as you continue to not be unreasonable or overly burdensome, you probably would be okay. But that's all speculation. That's crystal ball. Because we don't know what's going to happen to that current criteria that is there now. Where some of the communities are getting in trouble right now is because they are raising their impact fees, whereas you really are not. You're changing the categories and you're just modifying it where it's not unreasonable. So I don't think you have any SB 180 issues with this current proposal, but down the road, we have to look at that.
Because I have a lot of communities that did a study, identified what 100% impact fee for transportation, parks rec, whatever it is, and then they adopt something less. And what you're hearing a lot is then, when they say they're increasing, they're actually going from that 60% to 80 to 100% rate. So it's different than what you're doing. This is, that's a whole other thing because they didn't want to adopt the 100%. But then now, they're trying to adjust to, they're not collecting enough because they adopted less than the 100%. They're trying to increase that percentage. They're getting caught under all these other laws. So you're not, I don't see you facing any of that situation. I think it's a much cleaner position that you're in moving forward.
Can I ask Jason a question? So I know we went to the LPA with this, and there was a big discussion there, and hopefully a lot of people were able to view it online. But have you gotten any feedback from anybody in the development community regarding this?
No, I think, yes, in some respects is, Ken, they're asking us to calculate it twice right now. They want to know the timeline of this, and they want to know what their current schedule fee is versus what their potential adopted fee will be. So that may be something you want to consider. I don't, Dwayne, maybe you can answer this, but legally delaying the collection, if you see fit, to the new fee schedule, since there's a 90-day wait period. There's going to be a few developments that get caught in between that 90-day and are paying the current fee versus the proposed fee. So that may be something where we want to delay the collection or charge of their impact fee until the 90-day wait period is up so that they can pay the proposed fee since it's less.
Okay, that just confused me a little bit.
So current fee is higher. They're getting ready to pull a building permit, but they know the impact fee is coming in and for their category it might be lower. So they either delay pulling the permit or they need-
That's what I thought you said.
They need something from you that says, we will somehow delay the collection of the impact fee until the 90-day period is over, and then we can charge them the new fee. It's not significant, significant money for them or for you, but it's a question that we're being asked.
And Nancy, what can we do, I mean, is it a policy decision?
Before second reading, yeah. And you might be able just to deal with the scheduling of the collection. So there isn't a fee that's going to be assessed and collected, it's just when.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't want to delay any, I don't want somebody sitting on their hands for 90 days, just slows down the whole rebuild process.
Nancy will fill us in, I think, by next reading.
Yeah, and I'll sit down with Jason and Will and Tracy, and we'll talk about who is in that, in that range and what kind of, and Joe as well, as far as the financial impact of it.
Because at the same time-
It would be nice to see an example of the difference between what it would be with the old and versus what the new one would be if it's adopted.
Yeah, we're working on that right now with a project, a commercial project that is getting ready to pull the permit. They're almost done with that part of it, and they want to, they're asking. They don't know whether to move forward or not. I don't, you probably want them to move forward.
So they probably don't even know what the final number would be based on.
Correct, right, because-
So they want to know the number to make a decision.
And at the same time, because what's going to happen from an administrative standpoint is after that 90-day wait period, finance will open new accounts for each of these categories for transportation and for, and we'll have two brand-new accounts. And then we're trying to spend the money that's in the existing accounts. And so if we keep collecting and adding to them, at the same time, it gets harder and harder to spend. Because you want to get rid of the old money first and then start fresh with new accounts for new money.
So I guess, piggybacking on that, Joe, we're going to have multiple accounts, but eventually, those other accounts will dry up and we'll be able to close them?
Yes.
All right, good.
And then you open new interest-bearing accounts for the new revenues that come in.
Okay, thank you.
Karen, any questions?
Yeah, I know there was a lot of discussion in the LPA about, I think everybody was shocked as well as I was when I was watching, of why things were going down instead of up. You know, you're, I mean, common sense would say if you're going to have more building and you're going to rebuild and you're going to do all this, that those fees would go up. Can you give kind of an overarching perspective on that or?
Yeah, I'll try to explain that. I don't think I did a good job before. I think Dwayne talked about the percentage, right? So your growth percentage and how much you're growing as a community is related to how much percentage pays for the project. And I mentioned this to Will before, today, earlier today. You could add a billion dollars' worth of capital projects to your list that you want to do. It doesn't mean that growth can pay for all of those, right? So it's got to be a percent share. And what we're doing is trying to do a better job of tying a project that's needed and growth is requiring it, and you're paying for that rather than, honestly, currently it's, let's come up with projects to pay for with capital, with impact fees. So the other part to that, which you mentioned, is the growth is, it seems like a lot, there's a lot of commercial redevelopment, but percentage-wise, over the next 10 years, it's not like a huge, we're not going from 10,000 people to 50,000 people. It's mostly transient in nature. Our residential growth is typically pretty flat. And previously, there was a negative growth at one point for us. So that's why, it's because it's a growth percentage related to that. So it's very, very limiting now than it used to be of what we can spend the money on.
And that's basically by law.
By law, correct.
That's not because we're changing categories or doing anything like that. That's what the law is telling us.
Yeah, and you're replacing things. I think you got some grant money to do those. You're replacing infrastructure that is putting back something. We don't want to spend impact fees monies on that. And Dwayne, if you want to add to that.
Couple of key words in the Florida Impact Fee Act is that we need to consider, it's like two sides of a coin, need for improvements and benefit. And so, for instance, on the new ferry access points, that's a whole new thing you don't have now. Well, that's going to benefit everybody in the community. So you can't just say, new development, we want you to build all these ferry systems and new ferry access points and pay for it all because that's more than their fair share. So that's the kind, you have to think about that. What do you need and then who's going to benefit? And a lot of the things you're going to do will benefit existing fee payers. So I think the ferry access is probably one of the easiest ones to see because you don't have that now. So you can't just say, new development, pay for it all because then it becomes kind of like exclusionary. You're trying to ask people to pay more than their proportionate share and, you know, the impact fee actually, no, no, it's got to be proportionate. And you got to consider not only the need side, but who benefits from the improvement.
Could you say that, just simple math, that there's more people participating, so your percentage is going to be less? That's why your impacts E is going to be down just a little bit, but the overall whole is going to be more?
Yeah, I think the methodology of it was done to calculate the impact fee itself for each category is updated. So again, we're using today dollars, and I think Karen, that was kind of your question. We go to DOT, kind of what was the cost of sidewalks and roadways. Those are all current day dollars that we're using to calculate the capital project cost and estimate that. And moving forward, what does that inflation look like for cost, right? Because everything goes up. But again, the share of new growth has to be equal to what their new growth is, right? So you can't say new growth is going to pay 80% of this when our growth is only a few percentage points.
Got you.
And I also think there's a lot of chatter between impact fees being charged and public benefit. So if you go to the example of the ferry and like stations, whatever, so as a public benefit, for example, the Arches is putting in their ferry station. But that's a public benefit. How does that affect the impact fees?
Well, and so I think from a term, don't, this in no way will restrict your negotiating ability and analysis of projects, right? Those are two separate things. So at the end of the day, Fort Myers Beach is a little bit different, but I've always encouraged communities to let the developer build the infrastructure that they also need but also benefits the public because it gets done right away versus, and then get the credit. I mean, honestly, if you never collected a dime of impact fees, you're probably okay because you've given somebody credit.
Huge benefit.
And something was built and something was done rather than you waiting five years to collect to do a project. So there's always, in my opinion, it gives you an opportunity for negotiation with timing and infrastructure. And again, is it a public benefit? Yes. Who's responsible for it? Whose share is it? Can you negotiate that timing with a developer differently than what you would do just sitting back and collecting impact fees?
Okay, thank you.
It's a tool to- It's a tool to give credits.
It's a complicated tool.
So based on that, what you, I agree with what you said, but based on that, who does that negotiation? Is it town staff with the developer? Because once the policy decisions are done, then in this case, just use infrastructure.
Right.
If, if they're willing to do more than what they were required to do, then staff could administratively then look at that and say that is a, a better use of giving credit versus collecting impact fees?
Sure, yeah. I mean, you, obviously, every approval that changes the landscape comes to you. You also have your developer agreement process that's a local. And then Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong, but you also have a statutory development agreement process that is infrastructure timing and, and who's responsible for what and when. Honestly, Margaritaville probably should have had one of those because they built infrastructure for the town. I think the town reimbursed something that they needed to do and the timing of all that. So that's kind of what that tool is for. And then impact fees plays into that and you get the credits and we do the math, you built this capacity, here's your credit at the bottom line. Yeah, we can go into all those, but it's, it's a tool.
No, I totally agree. It makes sense. I mean, you could see every benefit for both the town and for the developer.
Absolutely. I mean, if you want, if you need something now rather than wait five years...
It's a way to get a credit.
The way to get a credit, yeah. Give some credits. They're always going to get credit if they build infrastructure and they can ask for it. But the timing of that is between you and the developer.
Anything else, Karen?
No, I'm good.
Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to digress for just a minute to illustrate a couple of points. I can't remember if it was the mayor or the assistant town manager who came up with the aggregate number of how much the town of Fort Myers Beach contributes to the Lee County School District annually. Was that, was that your number, Mr. Mayor? Was that Tracy's number?
I'll let Tracy.
Actually, I sent it to the mayor, so the mayor can certainly answer.
What is that number?
I want to say close to 30.
Yeah, it was like 29.3 million-ish, right around there. For the last 12 months.
Yep, so we're contributing roughly $30 million annually for a B-school that, that is not open. We're, we're also refining and collecting on behalf of Lee County School District impact fees as the island rebuilds for Lee County School District, for a school that does not currently exist or is open. It certainly exists, it's not open. And then to add insult to injury, we've got a school district that's making, allegedly, seems to be, making application to FEMA, a federal entity for disaster relief, premised on the suffering and the tragedy here in Fort Myers Beach, getting money and then reallocating that money for other purposes. I just think that's fascinating, given the environment that we're in, how much this community not only contributes to the school as a community, but also contributes financially to Lee County School District. This just again, is an opportunity to highlight the absurdity of that whole discussion. So I'm hoping on November 5th, the superintendent will come to the mediation with, with a grasp of that information and appreciation of that information and then hopefully work with us to rebuild our B-school. But that's all, that's all I've got.
Just wanted to clarify a little bit of your synopsis. They did make application to federal funding and did receive obligation for said funding based on that application. That's the only...
Yeah, I guess the only alleged is, is whether it was legal or not, right?
Still to be determined.
Yeah, still to be determined.
John?
I'm not going to follow that, but thank you for doing that. I appreciate your intellectual digs, so no further questions.
The only question I had, I think I know the answer, but is there any scenario, God forbid we have to go through another emergency situation, to alter the percentage that can be used of impact fees for emergency purposes only? Is there legislatively anything that we can do to, God forbid, we have to do something again where we have impact fees that are sitting there, whether it be borrow against that account to be able to, to fund something that needed to be done immediately if we didn't have emergency funding to do it? Just curious, just thinking ahead.
No.
A lot of sheds heads, head shaking, no, I kind of, that's what I figured.
Yeah, in the back of the Impact Fee Act, there's some specific reporting requirements and things that Joe has to do and there's limitations that you have to only spend it on, you know, the project-specific kind of reporting, how you spent the money. I would say no. It's very restricted, right?
That's all I...
We've tried to give you as much flexibility within the guardrails of what the act tells you have to use it.
Sure. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
So this is both study and land development code amendment is part of this ordinance.
Okay. Any further discussion or a motion on...
I think we need public comments.
Public comment, sorry, yes. Public comment. Any of you three like to speak on public comment? All right, we'll close public comment. Any further discussion or a motion to move this to the second reading on November 17th at 9:00 AM?
So moved.
All right, got a motion by Councilor King.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Safford. Any further discussion? Councilor King?
Aye.
Councilor Safford?
Aye.
Councilor Woodson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adheral?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Next is our administrative agenda. The first thing up is, What's Up FMB is seeking an approval for lanterns of the island procession, Illumination Parade to be held on November 15th. Don, you want to come up and fill us in exactly what it is for those that may not know?
Okay, so I did ask them to save the video. If we want to show that, it speaks for itself.
Okay. There you go.
So this is exactly what I would like to copy and have on our island every year.
Will you be willing to chop that?
No, I'll have a whale. A little whale. Imagine that. As you can see how beautiful it is. In this part, they're walking down the beach, which would be my ultimate goal. But I love the birds that are, you know, they got the legs moving and everything else. Hopefully, everybody sees that this is a beautiful thing for our island.
Almost sounds like our tuba player.
Yeah.
I'm ready for my draw.
Yeah, okay.
We don't have to watch the whole thing. It's like 45 minutes. I think that's sufficient, but yeah.
We get the point, yeah.
I'm already trying to go to sleep after the preceding discussion. But at any rate, so I'm Dawn Miller. I'm here as president of What's Up FMB. And our purpose is to bring our tourism back to our island and recreate the vibe that we used to have. So somebody brought that parade to my attention and I couldn't think of a better way to, to bring some vibrancy back to the island. So in working with the town, LC SO, and the fire department, I'm here today to ask you to approve us to have that parade on November the 15th at dusk.
Dawn, where would it start and where would it end?
This year, it is planning to start at Bayside Park and it's currently slated to go to the, I can't think of the name of the avenue there, but it's between Tunaskin and what was once the Cottage Bar and Chuckers. Although in my ultimate perfect world, we'd get down to Diamond Head. So, you know, I'm open to whatever the town will allow me to do. This year, it is going from Bayside Park only because that's what I've already asked for. But next year, I think I'm going to try to go from Pink Shell to Diamond Head.
So you're going to go up Old San Carlos, up by the pier and then down?
Right, out to the beach and then we'll go south.
Okay. Any questions for Dawn? Scott?
Not this time.
Karen?
I just have a clarification to help you. Because there's a lot of comments about, you can't set those off, you can't have, you know, everybody keeps thinking it's a torched parade. It is not a torched parade. It's battery-operated lights. You hold on to these things with a stick. You do not release them anywhere. Am I saying anything wrong, Dawn?
Not at all. No, that's exactly it. In fact, if somebody destroyed my whale that I'm having be built, I'd be devastated.
Because if you have gone to any of these sessions to do this, it is painful. Absol-, I mean, some people love it. I am not a DIY gal at all. It is painful.
Wait a minute, you can't just get these on Amazon?
Well, you can, but you can get little lanterns and they're not anything like this. And I'm telling you, it's painful. As you will see my painful fish in this parade. You will look at it and think it's painful.
Yes.
Chad, you don't need to come up. Just nod your head. You don't have any issues with this environmental side, do you? Or would you like to come up and say something?
No.
No? Okay, that's all we need here.
All right.
Vice Mayor?
I would first of all say extremely cool. Thank you, Dawn, and for your team to put this together. Extremely cool idea. Could you just elaborate a little bit as to how people can participate? You, I think your colloquy with Karen suggested that a lot of folks make these themselves, but to the mayor's point, can you get certain things on Amazon? And then do you sign up to be part of the parade? How do you, how do, how do you get, how do, how do folks engage in this? Because it's a really cool idea.
Thank you, Jim. So we have had a couple of workshops. I also took supplies to the Bay Oaks grand opening for the kids to make them there. I'm going to host a few at Station 31 for those that want to participate. And you can buy the supplies on Amazon for a basic version. We also have artists on the island prepared to make large ones like my whale, much like what you see in that video. Obviously, this is our first year. We're not going to be a big parade and we're certainly not going to have a lot of the big lanterns. But, you know, every year, I think it'll grow.
I don't know, I have to add that Rick Lowry?
Yes.
I think he's going to have like four people have to carry his. It's so big.
Yeah, he has, he has a very large, I think, 10-foot lantern.
So again, Dawn, for folks who might be watching, what are these, what's the actual name of these type of lan-, are they called lanterns, parade lanterns? What do you call them?
I believe they might be called Chinese lanterns. And if you go like to a classic Chinese parade, you'll see them. But our version would be more marine animals and, and island life type things. So also wanted to add that I did, I did do a sign-up sheet. It's free to participate, but it would be nice for us to know who all will be there and what kind of lantern they're bringing, so we have an idea of size and length of the parade.
And who do they reach out to to communicate their interest in participating?
So we have a Facebook page called What's Up FMB and on there is where I have the actual sign-up link.
That's great, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Councilor King?
No questions, but I just want to thank you for your passion, your commitment and all you do for this island.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a very cool idea. I like the, and I like the spirit of competition with it, too. Not that there's any competition on the island, right?
Actually, I will say that Rick is already planning his lantern for next year.
Well, there you, there you go. No, it's great, looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. All right, any further discussion or motion for approval or denial of the, I guess, is it, is it a special exception or just a permit or just the use? What are we looking at here? The events?
It's a special event permit.
Just a special event permit, right? Okay, that's what I thought.
So I'll move forward to approve the event permit for the Illumination Parade for What's Up FMB.
All right, got a motion by Councilor Woodson?
I'll second.
Counsel by, second, secretary Safford?
Wow, I gotta have like a jar up here.
You know, you do, you do. All right. All right, any further discussion? Councilor Woodson?
Aye.
Councilor Safford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adheral?
Aye.
Councilor King?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. That motion carries unanimously. And next is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach providing direction to the Town of Fort Myers Beach Charter Review Commission regarding the role of alternates to the commission who were appointed by the Town Council, providing for an effective date. And it says to refer to Councilmember Safford for further explanation.
Nancy, would you like to start by giving the legal reason we're doing this?
Well, it's really more of a logistical. In order to keep the, I mean, first of all, let me state that you don't amend your charter every year. So the, any potential amendments to the charter and the review is, is a very serious thing because it gets to the heart of how the Town of Fort Myers Beach functions as a local government. And your charter required you to appoint, I believe it was five people to serve on that. You had more people interested and so you basically selected two additional individuals to serve as alternates. They did have their first meeting and they're very enthusiastic and rolled up their sleeves and they're ready to get to work on reviewing the charter. But there was some uncertainty as to what the role of the alternates would be. And there was some follow-up discussion as some options that they could. And in your resolution is where we put what the options were.
Yeah, just to add that, well, first of all, as Nancy said, what a great, what a great group. Jim Dunlap's the chair, Brian Thomas is the co-chair, a lot of enthusiasm. So when we go through this charter review process, after 10 years, some things change. So basically, the charter review is, is to do big things that will require reprimand, that are permanent. In other words, we, they may decide that, you know, it's not council at large, there's five districts, it's big stuff like that. But as we're reviewing the charter, things like this come up that can be taken care of with, with a resolution or with an ordinance. So this was one of the first things we found. There was really no, nothing codified of how we handle the alternates. So this is, we're going to meet the second Tuesday of every month up until April. And by then, hopefully, they'll, they'll have, you know, big referendum items. But in between the first meeting and, and April, I'm sure they're going to uncover things that have changed over the last 10 years that don't necessarily need a referendum that could be changed by either an ordinance or a resolution. So this, this is the first one.
And so the, the resolution that's before you today that we're asking for you to approve would kind of set some guidelines for how these alternates can function. Again, having the two additional alternates is not in conflict with your charter, it is not in conflict with your code of ordinances. So, so the guidelines would be that the alternate should, shall attend all meetings and shall participate as non-voting members. So they would basically sit at the dais, discuss, but when it is time for the vote, they would not vote. And in the event of an absence of one of the appointed members, the alternate that is in attendance shall become a voting member. And then the two alternates, so their, their attendance would be required at all meetings, but they would alternate. So in the event that one person was absent, the first person would be able to vote in their stead. And then the next time, if somebody is absent, then the other individual would be able to vote in their stead. And they also would be subject to compliance with the Sunshine Law as well as public records law throughout the duration of their appointment as alternates to that.
Yeah, and they, they went through this and trying to figure out the best way to, to do it. I think this, this way is, is the most equitable and transparent. I think it's, 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 moving forward is really going to help them make some good decisions.
So basically, this is just saying the two alternates would be there and in the event that someone doesn't show up alphabetically, the first alternate would then become the voting member for that meeting.
Just for that meeting.
Just for that meeting, yeah.
But what's really good is, is their input. So although they, they're not going to vote, they can, you know, give us, give some insight, you know, why, why was it like this? Or hey, what do we want to do going forward? So the conversations were really good.
And the attendance was an issue that was discussed somewhat because of the fact that you want that person to know what the Charter Review Committee has already discussed. So if they don't come to the meetings, then they may not be as up to speed or understanding of the debate of the issue. So making sure that they attend was an important consideration.
That makes sense to me. It's similar to the model that TDC uses. You have input, but you don't have a vote, but you're there. Any questions, John? Any questions, John?
None.
Jim?
None.
Karen? All right. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 25-300, the Charter Review Commission role of altern- alternates as proposed? I'll make a motion to approve as opposed, based on the recommendations from the committee.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Adler, seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? I'm an aye. Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adheral?
Aye.
And Counselor King?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Resolution 25-301. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving a supplemental task authorization number one with Access Infrastructure LLC in an amount not to exceed $280,000 to provide technical support, GIS, and special project management for the 2025-2026 fiscal year effective October 1st, 2025, authorizing the town manager to sign the agreement, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Will?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really, nothing more to add to that language. Just that this is a supplemental task authorization to access, to provide some more services to us, to help us with our permitting, planning, comprehensive plan development, LDC work, et cetera. Frankie, can, if you have more questions, I would defer to the Community Development Director.
Okay. Counselor Safford, any questions for Frankie or Will?
As always, is the money there? Is it budgeted?
Yes.
Where's it coming from? Yes, so if, if, Joe, if you, if you want to add more, but I think, yeah, the answer, yes, it's there. It's, it's already in our, our building. In our building fund, yeah.
Okay.
Frankie has already coordinated with Finance Director on that.
That was my main question and always will be. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Woodson?
I have none.
Vice Mayor Adheral?
None.
Counselor King?
Counselor Safford took care of mine.
Yep. That was, I think, everybody's question. All right. Any further discussion? Or is there a motion for Resolution 25-301 for Access Infrastructure? STA number one, fiscal year 25-26 services?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Safford?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor King. Any further discussion? Counselor Safford?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adheral?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion carries unanimously. Next is Resolution 25-302. This is STA number 14 for Coastal Engineering Consultants. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the town manager to execute supplemental task agreement number 14 of contract RFQ-21-09-EN between the Town and Coastal Engineering Consultants, Inc. for additional construction phase services regarding resurveys and shorebird monitors, monitoring associated with the Estero Island Shoreline Protection Project and the permit required post-construction winter bird monitoring, funding support, stakeholder coordination, and project administration services for a cost of $161,720 and providing an effective date. Will?
Yes, nothing to add to what was stated. I'd like Chad Schutz to come on up and be prepared to discuss these in more detail, as well as the following item, E.
Okay. Good morning, Chad.
Hey, good morning. Chad Schutz, Environmental Staff. Chad Schutz, Environmental Staff for the Town of Fort Myers Beach. So, this is the additional construction management, monitoring, and resurveys that were needed for the extension of the beach re-nourishment project. So, the contractor should be picking up this bill. It will, should meet the definition for actual damages in our contract. I think Ms. Nancy's good with that. So, if you have any other questions, please let me know.
That was a question I had. So, ATNA will be covering these, these additional fees?
Yes, it should come off the retainage for their last pay-up settlement that they will be submitting.
Okay. Counselor Safford, questions for Chad?
None.
Counselor Woodson?
I have none.
Vice Mayor Adheral?
None.
Counselor King?
Nothing.
Thank you, Chad.
You're welcome.
All right. If there's no further discussion, is there a motion for approval for a resolution or denial for Resolution 25-302? STA number 14, Coastal Engineering Consultants?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor King?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adheral?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion carries unanimously. Next is Resolution 25-303. It's ITB-25-02-EN. Change Order Number One for Dune Planting Project. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the town manager to execute Change Order Number One to contract ITB-25-02-EN between the Town of Fort Myers Beach and Earth Balance Corporation, increasing the contract price to $95,720 to construct the dune plant project and providing for an effective date. Jim?
Yeah, so this is for additional plantings associated with our dune planting project. This adds about 25,500 plants in addition to the initial 135,000 plants that were on the contract. We had a few properties, including Diamond Head, Best Western, Estero Beach and Tennis Club, Bermuda Dunes, Leonardo Arms, and Islands Inn that wanted additional plantings, additional width. And we're happy to accommodate that. It's going to help stabilize the sand and provide additional habitat for nesting sea turtles. So, this will be picked up by the FDM grant. And so, no calls to the town directly.
Counselor King, questions?
Yeah, a couple. I, I discussed with town management before the, the need to address the invasives or the sand spurs. Are we doing something about that? Or is that up to the individual property owner or?
So, yes and yes. According to the Dune Management Plan, it is up to the property owner. However, town staff has been out there with the initial planning to clean up sand spurs in addition to the accesses. And the, the new plantings where we had some colonizing growth from sand spurs. They're native species. That's what they do. They're going to get in there. It will keep feet off the dunes if you do want to protect your dune and not have people walking through there. Sand spurs are a great solution for that. But at the property owner's request, we did remove those sand spurs and continue to march down the dune alignment and get those out of there.
And to piggyback on that, since you mentioned folks walking through the dunes, we've got that happening on a regular basis. And yesterday, well, actually Saturday, I guess, I watched Lee County Sheriff's Office drive their buggy over along the dune. What are we doing to prevent folks from traversing that?
So, we have some stakes at. Do you know where they were driving over it?
Carlos Point and into Islands Inn.
Okay. So, we can reach out to them and educate them on where it's at and what we've done. So, we're, we're putting out some stakes. We've concentrated on the downtown area. That's the most frequent in areas. I haven't seen on my patrols, you know, there's a few spots here and there. But by and large, people are finding those sandy paths and using them. So, we can reach out to Lee County Sheriff's Office if property owners would like some additional staking around their property just to delineate where the accesses are and call attention to where people should not walk. We can, we'll certainly respond to those requests.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Adheral? Chad, you weren't here earlier when I was praising you
I heard you. Thank you.
For 160,000 plantings, which is what we talked about earlier. But just doing my simple math here, I have 130,000, which you referenced just a second ago. And then, you want to potentially add with this provision 25,000. So, that gets us to 155,000. So, is there some kind of a controversy, a scandal going on with these plantings? What, how come we're not at 160,000? I'm kind of kidding.
I thought we were 135 and 25.
So, 135. So, that gets us to 160,000. So, so the 135 has already been planted. Is that fair?
Uh, correct, yes, sir.
And so, you're hoping to plant these 25,000 additional plantings?
Uh, correct.
Yeah, that's spectacular. I thought the 160 were planted. But I'm still excited because it's a, I mean, that's a huge number. I mean, how, could you just give people an idea? I mean, the warehouses or where these were grown? I mean, not warehouses, but
Yeah, greenhouses.
Greenhouses. I mean, this was a, I assume, how many people were involved? Were they literally bending over planting one at a time? Are there machines that do this? I mean, this is a, this is a pretty big deal. The island ought to celebrate it a little bit.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in a position to give away any trade secrets of Earth Balance. But it is quite the operation. I was very impressed at the warehouses that whenever we made the visit to do a quality assurance on the quality of the plants that were going to be coming towards Fort Myers Beach. But saw all the different stages from the very, you know, right when they're sprouting and very delicate to where we got them right before they came over here. Healthy root systems. They actually, you know, the railroad vines that they had were, you know, it could have been up to six feet long. And they actually trimmed those before bringing them over here just because of the tanglement and all that. But the roots, the health of the roots is really what we're putting that money towards. And it shows
Somebody physically planting each individual planting? Or is there a machine that does it?
Again, I'm not in a position to
Oh, come on.
Yeah, I, I don't know, Vice Mayor.
You must have been out there when they were doing it, right?
Not the, not the initial plantings, no.
I witnessed it and it was done by people.
Each individual planting, hand-planted?
Yeah, I think they, you know, they sprinkle a few seeds and they actually send, so the COs there
In some cases, they drill down and
Oh, so we're talking about, I, I didn't know if you meant in the
No, the 135,000 have already been planted. Were they planted individually, plant by plant?
In the greenhouse? Are we talking about out, out here?
On the beach.
Oh, okay. I thought we were talking about on the beach.
No, 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 no. I don't need, I don't need to know their trade secrets.
Out in the greenhouse, yeah. So, out on the beach, it's just a a auger that they're using, just a hand auger. It's almost like a, like a weed eater kind of thing, except they have that implement and they're just, you know, poking it down 160,000 times.
And is the plant then part of the, of the auger? Or is it
Nope, they're dropping it in.
Separate drop?
You know, they're, yeah, they're dropping it in and moving the sand over with their feet and moving along.
That's a lot of plants.
It is.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's tremendous. I mean, I think I heard a lot of skepticism from some of our glass, half-empty folks. This are always, we have a reservoir of constant critics. That somehow the sand would all go away because we wouldn't do any plantings. And it seems like this is a massive piece of the beach re-nourishment plan because you had said, and I'll just say it again, or have you say it again, because I think it's important for people to, to think about this. But the plantings not only do the obvious thing by being a plant and helping retain that sand, but they also potentially, when it's windy, collect the sand and help, help build the dude, the dune. And then, the plant continues to grow, grow higher. So, preserving that dune and creating a more of an emergency berm. Do you want to just, I just think it's really interesting, just talk a little bit about that? Because I think it's a big part of this planting process.
Yep, I mean, you said it very well. So, they, they're sticking up. The wind's going to slow down while they, while breezes by there and drop out some sand. And as that happens, minute after minute, day after day, and month after month, we get a dune built up. And it'll offer elevation for those waves to hit and break before, instead of breaking on the, the infrastructure and up in properties.
And the, and the properties that you referenced that will be supplemented with this provision, they've already been planted, but these will be additional plantings?
Right, so, yeah, this change order is in addition to that 135,000. And we have some more to plant in front of Leonardo Arms. And we are going to be coming back, hopefully, with another change order for some additional sea grape plantings, beach access plantings, and some canopy trees.
And that, that's obviously because these are, these are, these areas have been, are prone to serious erosion. I mean, it's, it's obviously to supplement the areas of the beach that are most vulnerable?
Yeah, erosion. The sea grapes are going to be a bit more woody. So, they would act similar to like what the mangroves do in the Back Bay, helping that wave action stabilize the, the shoreline to that wave action. So, the sea grapes will have those, you know, in addition to the woody stems, a little bit more of a deeper root system and also offer the benefits of shielding light from our parking lots and the, the parking areas underneath the condos.
Would you mind referencing the names of those properties that will receive that supplemental planning? I think you went through them. I think they're on your list.
So, we have Best Western got some, Diamond Head, Leonardo Arms, Estero Beach and Tennis Club, Bermuda Dunes, Islands Inn, Newton Park. I think that's all of them.
All right, that's great. Thank you very much. Thanks for your efforts. Counselor Woodson?
I have no questions, but I just think it's a great, great job to walk along the beach now compared to what it was. I mean, it's just heaven.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Safford?
Yeah, I, again, what the beach looked like three years ago, even a year ago, and what it looks like today is
It's night and day.
Night and day. Thank you for all, all you do.
You're all are welcome. If anybody else wants to sign their easement, you know, reach out. We'll get the plantings in and then you'll enjoy the benefits of the dune management plan.
Should they reach out to you directly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's your email address?
C-H-A-D-D at F-M-B-G-O-V dot com.
Okay. Do you want to provide your number or no? Very good. The other question I have is, how fast can people? I was at Diamond Head this weekend and saw how their dune plantings have, and I know they were kind of ahead of us, but they're really growing in nicely there and really filling in that dune. What can people expect as far as growth over a year to see those plants increase?
Yeah, so it'll pause out a little bit as the days get shorter and the, the weather, climate gets a little drier. The other thing I've noticed is the ones that are on grade, where our emergency berm got washed out and they're on grade, they are growing a little bit quicker. They're a little bit closer to the water table and maybe have a little bit more sitting water after the rains versus the ones that are up on some of the berms that we were able to rebuild with overwashed sand after Helene and Milton. So, those look like they're, you know, you can just tell there's a little bit more lush down closer to grade than there is up on the berm. But other than those differences, they all seem very healthy. And it will take, you know, in the order of years to get healthy dunes back. But hopefully, we'll be blessed with a few more calmer storm seasons like we had this season. And they'll get a chance to establish.
I think what you meant to say is we will, we will be blessed with
Yes, sir.
Countless years.
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. I, I just, I don't always have the greatest hearing. So, that's what I thought I heard.
No worries.
Thanks, Chad.
You're welcome.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could just add, Tom Yazzo did reach out already to El Ceso about, to answer your question about driving over the dune plantings. They acknowledged, but also just to emphasize what great partners they are. There were, there were some extra patrols this, the past few days here on the, on our beach, our area to help us enforce the leash law and the no motorized vehicles on the beach ordinances, which we've seen an increase in that with people returning, you know, to the beach because our beach is so great. That, so, but they'll, yeah, we got the message to them to use the sand access points to get on the beach.
Yeah, and I apologize. In no way did I mean to disperse them. I think it's just more of an awareness and educational.
No worries.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve or deny Resolution 25-303? I would move that motion, Mr. Mayor. All right. Got a motion by Vice Mayor Adheral?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor King. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Adheral?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safford?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion carries unanimously. Our last administrative agenda item is Resolution 25-304, Ongoing Miscellaneous Professional Services, RFQ-25-06-AD. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving seven individual professional service agreement with the following firms, which were negotiated by town staff as directed by Town Council on August 18th, 2025, in response to RFQ-24-06-AD entitled Ongoing Miscellaneous Professional Services. Number one, ADG Agriculture LLC, Architecture, I'm sorry, LLC. Bowman Consulting Group. Three, CW3 Engineering. Four, LGA Engineering. Five, Tetra Tech. Six, Traffic and Mobility Consultants. And seven, Weston and Sampson Engineering, authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement with each of the top-ranked firms for each category of work within the request for qualifications and which were successfully negotiated and providing for an effective date. Will?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In continuation with the directive from council, we've continued negotiations with the firms for our Rolodex of professional services. Our contracting team, as well as finance team and the appropriate directors have completed seven more negotiations. We've reached agreements with those and these proposal for those seven.
We've reached agreements with those and these proposals for those seven. After this, we will have nine remaining of the 32 for consideration.
Counselor Safford, any questions for town manager?
Not this time.
Counselor Woodson?
I do not.
Vice Mayor Aderhold? Counselor King?
Nothing.
I do not have any either. All right, is there a motion for Resolution 25 dash 34, either approval?
Can I make a brief comment?
I suppose, I guess I should have.
I just wanted to acknowledge staff and thank them for all their help in doing this. This was a total of 32 contracts that needed to be created, negotiated, and then brought back to you for approval. And they did 16, now they've done seven, so they only have nine left. So I just wanted to give them a shout out.
Very good. All right. Anyone else? Amy? No? Deputy, deputy town manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a motion for Resolution 25 dash 304? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Mayor Allers, seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? I'm an aye, Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Aderhold?
Aye.
And Counselor King?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next is final public comment?
We do, we do have somebody.
Okay.
Let me, hold on, let me wake my phone up. It is Angelis?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Come on up.
And Armando Martinez.
You're going to go one at a time or are you coming up together? One at a time or together?
Together.
Together.
Okay, got it.
Good morning, my name is Angelis Martinez, he's my husband, Armando Martinez. I have a question because I tried to explain you, my English is not perfect, you know? But we have the catamaran in the morning ball field. Then usually I pay 400 something every month because I using the ball for long time. Then now I see in my bill, the amount is going up, is 500 something. Then I has a question is, is some reason for the change? Because I have too many friend in the ball. I using the ball, I parking the boat all the time. Usually I go to the Key West or Dry Tortuga or whatever, anyway, I pay the ball. But now it's really high for me. Then I am not sure what happened, why they going up. Now it's 20 dollars, now it's 30 dollars, it's 100 something dollar for every month. Then I am not sure if you have some reason or I don't know what happened. Because I think right now for Meyer Beach have the more high rate in all this area. Because I go for many different place. And in right now, for example, in Key West is 25. Then right now, when I see the rate in the website, the last week, the last Saturday is 410. And today is 532 something. Then I am not sure, in Naples is really high too, you know? Then because Yes, in Naples, many people not using the ball because it's very high the price. Then many people go for the federal water and it's free, you know? But I think for me, for my boat, it's better using the ball, you know? Then I am not sure is what happens if you have any Then is this one now is the price, we need move the boats, you know? Because anyway, I pay the ball, using the ball or not using, I pay because I want to keep the ball for my boat, you know? Then maybe, I think maybe the reason is for the, maybe you need more money. But I think maybe me and some friends in the, in the ball, he say me, is the, this is the price right now, I move the boat for the next month. Then is I moved my boat and many people move the boat? What happened? Then do you not have 400 and 500? You lost the money for, I don't know, you have any reason?
More money for the injura, more money for the ball, for money, 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 money.
Anyway, I paid for the parking my car, usually not parking my car because
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to stop.
We'll have one of the staff members get with you.
I'm sorry?
One of our staff members will be able to, Will, can we have someone meet with them to fill them in as to what the changes work? Okay, they will meet with you to discuss, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else?
Jennifer Rusk.
Hi, good morning, Jennifer Rusk, resident. I just wanted to, I heard Mr. Nessbaum from Murph come and speak about, give the Murph report, which was amazing. But I just needed to come in and clarify something with the budget. The money, there was a vote, it was, I believe, six to one to allocate some of the money from our budget to go towards other things. It wasn't specified that it would be trees, so there wasn't a vote yet for that. But after that vote and after the Murph meeting, I did speak with one of the contributors, who said, no, I really would like all that money that we gave to go towards the children's books. I reached out to Joe, asked him for a printout to, so I could look at those checks. And the money at the bottom was allocated for those children's books. So we just wanted to let you all know, to be determined. I think Murph needs to have another discussion on that, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anyone else? That will close public comment, town manager items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things to discuss or inform the council about. FEMA final submission, FEMA Cav final submission was Friday, October 17th. I'd like to commend Dr. Kohler and the rest of the staff for getting us to that point very well and very judiciously. They got the, a lot of work, a lot of work went into each and every one of those submissions. And they did meet the suspense. We're waiting for FEMA to provide the final response to those submissions. It's a little slow now because there were some impacts of the shutdown on the FEMA staffing. So it's a little slow, don't know exactly, we don't have a timeline in that response. But what we are moving forward with anyway is putting together our submissions for the community rating system, which would be the next logical step in that process. And as possibly a good indicator, we were already given, provided the point of contact for our CRS representative in that process to start working with them already from the FEMA Region 14. They gave us that, so that's a good indicator. But not receiving the final letter of the Cav visit yet, I'm hedging a little bit on that. But, but it's good, we continue to work with that team. And I'll let Tracy please add anything to that if you'd like.
I think that Will said it perfectly. I'd like to thank Tom Yazzo and the code compliance staff, Frankie and his staff, or and the floodplain manager for all of their hard work, their notifications, their documentation. We had some pretty good discussions with FEMA on a case-by-case basis with each one of the properties at times. And really just helping them understand our situation and how our floodplain regulations apply to a specific property. And we feel like we've moved in a really great positive direction. Again, thank you to the residents who are coming forward and providing those documentation pieces that we need, such as elevation certificates, updated surveys, et cetera. That really helps with our documentation with them. And we look forward to the final letter and potential clearance.
Can you just give us an update on the roughly 100 properties? How many we have gotten official word back that have come into compliance?
We originally had 252 properties on the list, and we are close to 80% compliant. Someone wants to do the numbers, let's hear, that'd be 20% of the two, a little over 50 properties that we are either going through NOH through code compliance or we're waiting on litigation through the circuit court or that we just need guidance, for example, the flood panels. We're waiting for guidance from the state, from FDEM, the Florida Department of Emergency Management.
Great work, I know you guys worked really, really hard on this and
Yeah, it's huge.
Being involved in a lot of those conversations, it is, it can be very painful and very frustrating. But you guys did a great job of making the
We appreciate the other opportunities for community leaders to talk to our political
Yes.
components to that as well, so thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. What else you got, Will?
Okay, continuing on, this Friday night, Bay Oaks Fright Night is coming up this Friday night with music, bounce house, candy prizes, costume contest. I look forward to judging there, I think along with a couple of council members. So it should be a great event, I invite everybody to attend this Friday night. Also like to highlight the community services team for coming up with a, I think, a really good interim solution for lighting down in Old San Carlos Boulevard. I directed them to look at a, another interim, maybe an improved interim solution for some solar lights down there to provide some nighttime lighting. And I think the solution was pretty good. I went down and checked it out this weekend, and I heard some feedback from others that were appreciative. It's not the long-term solution, there's still, our team is still working with the county on the CDBG project and others that'll, that'll continue, are ongoing down there. So, and then finally, well, two things. Thank you, everybody, for wearing pink today in some form or another for Awareness, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I really appreciate our continued support for those efforts. And received word from the Fire District, Fire District, that they are also working on a strategic plan. They sent out, or will be sending out, a survey to residents of the beach. And they asked me to also forward that to our town staff and to all of you if you haven't already received it. So just FYI on that. That's all I have.
Okay.
I'll just piggyback on what Will offered, that I was there yesterday when one of the business folks came up to you and was pleased with, with the lighting. So that was, that was great feedback to hear and nice to know.
Yeah, I think it's what Frankie, the third time, second, third time we've had to put lights up due to, due to infrastructure destruction from storms. So nice to see we get some lights back there again. Any questions for Will?
I have one, and I keep pounding on this. But the, the light at Old San Carlos and Astero, do we have any other information on that? Because you can already see as you come over the bridge and how it's starting to get backed up with the busier we're getting, people are crossing like crazy, they pay no attention, and it's becoming, it's going to be an issue.
Go ahead, Frankie.
Good morning, Frankie Karpachik, Director of Community Development. We've talked to Mr. Rob Price with the county for almost every other week now on a couple of other different projects. They have put that out for bid as far as the electrical portion of it. It has to be raised for that light. We can check with them on Wednesday to see where they're at, and I can report back to you when we have our meetings. But currently, we don't, we know basically what you know. We've been asking for the last, I think, almost two years now to get a little help with that. And we were promised such, and so we'll just have to see where they're at.
I'll discuss with Dave Harner this week.
If I can piggyback on your question, if, the chances of that being up and running by season now is probably slim to none. Could, could when we talk with, with Mr. Harner, look at possibility getting the temporary lighting solution as opposed to having to hire a crosswalk? I mean, they did a great job, but it was still very inefficient. If it's possible to be able to get some sort of temporary, you know, sun belt or whatever, those lights that you could put out there that are temporary, to be able to use at least during season, to be able to help mitigate that traffic? Because I think Counselor Woodson's right, you're starting to see the backup of, of traffic coming up the bridge because of the pedestrian crossings there, there's no light to, or no control there. So if we could talk to Dave about that, that'd be great.
Will do.
Thank you. Any other questions for Will? Town attorney items?
So I have two items. First of all, I do want to acknowledge the hard work that Tom and his team of code enforcement officers have done, being the recipients of the various cases that FEMA has asked us to go ahead and move forward with. They've done a really hard, they had to dig deep. As everybody knows, paper doesn't float, and going to the magistrates, making sure that we have our cases tight. I do want to go ahead and recognize them publicly for, for their hard work. Because I basically work with them and review their work as that process goes forward. The second item deals with our meeting that we will be having with the school board on November the 5th. There are requirements under the statute for advertising, and there's other issues that have come up. I think at the last meeting, there was some discussion about, well, will the public be able to come and participate? Where are we going to have it? We do have, we didn't have, let me back up a little bit. The school board, through their attorney, has made several requests to us as far as changing the location. We were not authorized by you to deviate from that. And we did have some advertising deadlines that we wanted to make sure that we adhered to. So the advertisement has gone out today, and the meeting will take place here at Fort Myers Beach. The school board, of course, is not really pleased with that. And concerned too with how the meeting is going to proceed. Making sure that everybody has the opportunity to discuss and hopefully making some type of resolution and working out what our conflicts are. With that said, the idea of using a facilitator was raised, and Becky and I both encouraged that. We wanted to go ahead and get your approval to do that. An individual who was not opposed to by the school board is Derek Rooney. Derek Rooney is an attorney with Gray Robinson. He also serves as the city attorney for Benita Springs, which gives him, I feel very comfortable knowing that he understands how local government works. He also understands how school districts work. So he would be a great person to be a facilitator for us. There is an issue of cost, I don't think it's going to be significant, but significant is in the eye of the beholder, of course.
I believe Derek used to serve at one point as town attorney here.
He did.
And he currently serves as attorney for the Lee County Metropolitan Planning Organization.
That is correct, and he's also been a mediator for us in a dispute that we had earlier, well, I guess a couple of years ago, involving a vendor shortly after Hurricane Ian hit. So I would strongly recommend Derek to serve in that capacity. And I just wanted to get your approval to do that, simply because we don't really have any authority to make decisions on your behalf outside of a public meeting. I know Will has been very involved with Becky working on, on these issues. The hot buttons seem to be, you know, are we going to make opening statements? How is that going to work? Because typically in a mediation, the parties separate, they go into different rooms, the mediator goes back and forth. This is more of a conflict resolution, which is, I believe, intended to be more of an open discussion. But somebody needs to kind of maintain some decorum because at this point, it seems that we are pretty polarized.
I think Derek would be an excellent choice.
So, so a couple of things. First of all, to Will, Tracy, Nancy, and Becky, thank you for standing firm that this be the location. We all up on this dais, as well as many parents and concerned citizens, have made the extremely long drive out to Lee County School District Headquarters numerous times for long meetings that have at least initially bore fruit, but recently over the last year have not borne any fruit. So for them to come here in our brand-new town hall, I think is excellent. And we will welcome them and be gracious to them. I have no problem with a mediator, but I would suggest this, Nancy, as you discuss sort of process with the Lee County School District, and I'll just speak for myself on this. I would like to see the superintendent be able to go first. Because I can sit here today and honestly say publicly that I really don't know what her position is about the Fort Myers Beach School. Clearly, the lack of activity has indicated a less than favorable response as far as our, we are concerned. But if they have a long-term vision for the school, if they have a plan for the school, I think that's a great way to start off the discussion. Because for whatever reason, having watched all of this unfold over the last three years, I've not heard the newly-elected superintendent definitively opine on what her position is on behalf of the administration. I've heard lots of individual elected school board members, some of whom have been very gracious. I've yet to hear the superintendent articulate what her vision and/or plan is for the, for the Fort Myers Beach School. So for her to start off, that might, it might answer a lot of our questions, may solve problems, trying to give her, again, the benefit of the doubt. I just think that would be helpful for everyone, not just the council, certainly for myself, but for the ad hoc committee and the parents and all the rest of the community, to hear our elected superintendent, just give her vision and/or plan or philosophy for the beach school. Then we can kind of work from there. Because it's difficult to mediate a process where we really don't know what the foundational principles are for one of the parties who's involved in mediation. We know what our position is, we've been very clear on that. So if, if you could talk to the mediator and/or the school district, it might be nice to start that way respectfully. Because I can sit here today and tell you that I, aside from sort of an abdication of responsibilities, I, I still don't know what the elected superintendent's position is. So I think that might be a nice way to start, give her that opportunity. I'm just, it's my, my thoughts.
I would support that.
Okay, I can definitely take that. That's the type of feedback that we would like, working with Mr. Rooney and also with the, the school board's attorney. Will, I'll defer to you if you have any more that you want to, to add.
Sorry, one more, one more
Quick thing, I'd like to facilitate a process where at some point, the public, particularly the ad hoc committee, the parents of the schoolchildren and the members of the ad hoc committee have an opportunity at some point in the process to, to articulate their thoughts and concerns. In, in a perfect world, it'd be great for the public to have that opportunity as well. But if we're limited on time or process, at a minimum, have those ad hoc committee parents have an opportunity to chime in as well.
That was actually one of my questions, is this open to the public? And if so, what time does it begin and how does this?
It is a public meeting, so yes, it is open to the public. And we do believe that they have the opportunity to comment. How many members of the public are going to come? I don't know. We do have to maintain order and, and the decorum of the meeting. Which is why, again, having the facilitator there will assist in that regard. You know, the school board, they have, as far as public comment, the mayor school board, they have, as far as public comment, and the mayor, you know this, how they have a tiered process, depending on how many public comment requests are made. That determines the duration of time that each individual gets to speak. So, those are, I don't think at this point, we can really make a decision regarding that, or I can take feedback from you. You know, how would you propose managing that? Because at the end of the day, it's probably going to be, you know, you may want one thing, the school board may want another. Again, that's why we have the facilitator there to try to come up with some type of reasonable process.
Just to clarify Councilor Woodson's point, it is, just for folks who might be listening, it is one o'clock PM on Wednesday, November 5th, here at the town hall meeting. Again, to your point, it's open to the public. Not sure exactly what public comment will look like yet, but certainly open to the public.
I guess I would be a proponent of keeping the structure that we have during our normal meetings. I understand how they do it. I certainly don't expect us to get nearly the people that they see at their meetings, like we saw at the last meeting, that through their policies and procedures allow them to decrease the amount of time to speak. I do have spoken to several ad hoc committee members that would like to come and say some comments, and I think they've earned the right to be able to say their comments in their, in their own hometown, if you will, and not be, not be, their time should not be any shorter than what they're allowed to speak here. That would be my preference.
That's, that's good feedback for me to take forward.
I don't have anything to add to what Nancy said. I agree.
The cost, I think, Will, you just said, first they said that we would split it, but now apparently that's changed. Is that correct?
No.
No.
Their, their most recent response indicates that they would cover the cost if we do it at a different location for the mediator, or for Mr. Rooney, if that was agreed upon by them. I, I, if, I don't agree with that. And Mr. Mayor and council, my recommendation would be, it's within the amount you authorize me to, so then I would be willing to cover that cost to have it here, if that's something that they won't.
Well, I think out of, to use some of their terms, out of fiscal responsibility, I think it would make the most sense at minimum for both sides to split it.
Understood.
I agree.
And we'll add that to our negotiations.
And that, that they'll pay is, you know, location of their choice. No, it's going to be here. We've decided that, and split.
Okay. And if they say no, Eric, Derek doesn't, doesn't work for free. I mean, we do have to pay him at some point.
It would be my suggestion, if they say no, to splitting the costs. Apparently, the 29 million and change is not enough each year. I would say that I would trust this mediation session to be led by our council and their council, and then you all determine the process amongst the two councils. And we would not have a mediator then at that point if they would not split the cost. I think we have excellent counsel, and I think they've got a very professional counsel that we could work through a process internally that could facilitate a good dialing.
Yeah, I, I support that, that direction. I think it makes the most sense. Both parties are in the interlocal agreement. Both parties should bear the cost to see it through.
My only concern is that the cost that we're talking about is basically perhaps, what, four hours to eight hours of whatever his hourly rate is, and to be able to not go forward.
No, no, we would go forward. I think, I think what we're trying to, at least what I'm trying to say, and it sounds like the mayor agrees, and I'd be interested in my other colleagues' view, is that we would, we would use Derek's services if we split the costs. And if we have to incur the cost, then we would just allow each, our council and their council to facilitate the process. And I don't think it's the money at this point. I think it's the principle involved for the town to have to incur the cost of the mediator for a process that we're not even, we would rather not even be going through. And because they've been negligent in, with respect to their obligations, I think it's more of a matter of principle. You're right. And in the big picture, it's not a significant cost, but as a matter of principle, I think, I think it would be hard for me to, to support paying for that out of, I mean, again, it's okay to split the cost, but
So, what I'm hearing is that we are okay, and maybe a formal motion by the town council to work with Derek, and then on the 5th, discuss the payment?
No, I, here's, here's the motion I'll make, Madam Attorney. I would move that the town council approve the location of the Fort Myers Beach Town Hall on November 5th at 1:00. We would also approve the use of a mediator if it can be agreed on beforehand that both sides would split the cost. If both, if, if one side or the other refuses to split the cost, then we would just allow each, each party's town council or, and their Lee County, Lee County School District Council to then become the facilitators at the, at the meeting on the 5th of November. And then we would proceed accordingly.
Second.
We got a motion by Mayor, Vice Mayor Adarhol, and seconded by Councilor King.
I think we should add in their legal council as opposed to just town council.
That's fine. I would, I would make the motion as amended.
Councilor King?
Second amendment.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Adarhol?
Aye.
Councilor King?
Well, I will just say that the onus should be on them. I mean, they're the reason we're in this situation as it is. So, yeah, I just find it very sad and pathetic, actually. I will vote aye.
Councilor Safford?
Aye.
Councilor Woodson?
Aye.
I agree. I think in the spirit of continuing to stay open-minded and conversational, I will be an aye as well.
What else you have, Nancy?
Thank you. No, that's enough. Two, two items today. So, that's good.
That's it. Okay. Just as a reminder, there will not be a shade meeting at 3:00 as was originally planned, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Council member items and report. It's Councilor Safford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on the Charter Review Committee, they had a question and potentially next month, a request. They want us to know if there was any funds available for the charter review. They're, they've talked about perhaps doing a survey islandwide. They've also talked about maybe doing a partnership with one of the local universities with, with their government classes to get some young input, young eyes, maybe a professor or two to give some input. I know a number of towns have done this. They've done a partnership with local colleges. So, the question, I guess, my first question to Joe, is there, is there a budget available or money is available for the charter review?
Joe, finance director, there isn't anything specifically available, but with your approval, we could certainly take some, whatever portion you're speaking of from the contingency account. That would be really the only source.
Okay. I will, I'll bring that back to the committee, and there we're going to try to get some exact costs, so we know what we're looking at. So, if, if my colleagues here agree, I can take that back to, to the Charter Review Committee and say, hey, if we're going to do this, there potentially could be, but I want to know what the exact cost is going to be.
Yeah, please, because, you know, there are different avenues for surveys that are free. And I would hate to think there would be a cost associated with a university, but I don't know. So, but please.
So, we, we all, not, let me rephrase that pronoun. They all agree that we're not going to pay a consultant. We're not going to go out and find, I hate the word consultant, but this would just be a survey. But somebody would have to, you know, take the information and put it together.
I'd also like to see, when they say survey, we've seen a lot of surveys that have been done that just haven't reached anyone.
Right.
So, what kind of plan they foresee to be able to reach the most amount of residents to be able to fill out that survey? Because so far, most surveys have, you've gotten less than 100 people that have filled out a survey. So...
I think they, they had spoken about that, too. They want to make it as far-reaching and as pinpoint as possible. So...
Very good. I'd like to see what their plan is to be able to achieve that.
Okay. That's all I have, so I'll take that back to, to the review committee in two weeks.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Councilor Woodson?
Just a couple of quick things. So, Fright Night, on Friday night, I get to be a judge again. I'm so excited. I was asked. I've done this in the past. It's really, really fun with these kids.
It is fun.
So, bring on those costumes, guys. This would be great. The other thing I just want to comment on is Dawn Miller and her tireless work that she has done to get people back into our community, to literally participate, spend money, get the word out. I mean, she was instrumental in creating this 501(c)(3), What's Up FMB. Every time you go to one of those meetings, I mean, there's probably 30-plus people and businesses there representing and doing things. She is probably, you know, she's a good friend of mine, I will say that, but she's probably one of the most creative people I've ever seen. And the ideas that she comes up with and the hard work. So, I just say, we are so lucky to have Dawn and Mike in this community.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Vice Mayor Adarhol?
Beautifully said. Karen, I have nothing additional to add.
Councilor King?
Just a couple of items. I chaired the Lee County MPO on Friday. The Lee Tran representative had a update that I already shared with town staff, but I'd like to let you and the public know that the FDOT SR 865 project on Fort Myers Beach related to two bus stop pull-offs continues to progress. The traffic signal at Fifth Street is now activated. The yield to bus signage has been installed, and buses are no longer on detour. Delivery of new shelters for the two stops to be located in front of Margaritaville and Crescent Beach Park is expected by the end of the month with installation to follow. They will also be opening the new bus pull-off at Main Street and San Carlos Boulevard by the end of October. Also, today begins, as a member of the Board of Directors of the Florida League of Cities, today begins Florida City Week. I'll try to get more information to our PIO to disseminate to the public, but it's a time for municipalities to foster civics, education, collaboration, volunteerism, and more. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, John. Just a couple of things. If you didn't get in, you know, FPL sends us stuff all the time, either via phone or via email. If you missed it, I did get a call at the end of last week. I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact dates. I didn't have a pen to write it down, but they let us know that there's going to be drones flying overhead, looking at the lighting situation on the island. So, if you see some drones flying over, that's more than likely what it is. I just wanted to make people aware that you don't have to freak out and call the town. It's probably FPL doing their, their surveys from above. Because last time a drone was flying around, I got a call from my wife, and it was the end of the world as we know it. There's a, there's a drone flying down our street. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that, you're probably going to see some drones over the next week or two. The other thing is, a lighting update. Usually on a call every Friday with FPL about the update on Astero Boulevard. As you see, there's more poles, more lights going up. The county is currently working on doing the crosswalk, so that's why you're seeing some sections where there's poles and lights on it, some sections there are not. So, they're working concurrently with the county or with the FPL, who is doing the work for us. They're scheduled tentatively the first week. Thank you to Representative Botana for his help in getting FPL, or getting FWC to the table. They want to do a final review before they sign off on illuminating or lighting, energizing the lights, making sure the shield's in the right place, things like that. So, the first week of November, if I remember hearing correctly, they're going to, they're going to be down here, hopefully, to be able to sign off on some of that. So, some of the south-end segments that you see the poles and the lights on, hopefully at the beginning of November, you should start to see those energized. I know Jeff's been working with FPL closely to get our load center areas identified and contracts set up to be able to get those done. So, as of now, they're still on track, as far as they tell us, the end of November, to, to finish the project. They're working currently on the north Astero Boulevard, Boring. So, if you see them up there, they're going to be doing some work very soon in the, by, speaking of Old San Carlos and Fifth, they're going to be doing that area. So, you're going to start to see some, some light stanchions going up in there. But we're getting closer. It's been a long time. A lot of us have been working on this for six, seven years. So, we're getting closer. Thank you, Will, for the update. I was going to give that, but you already did on the Old San Carlos Boulevard, there's some lights down there now. And then the last thing I have is, this Wednesday, from 6:00 to 8:00, speaking of the school district, Mangaritas, if you know Mangaritas, was on the island before the storm down in Times Square, and are now set up off of 41 in Fort Myers Astero from 6:00 to 8:00 this Wednesday. They will have a panel there with Superintendent Carlin, Member Fleming, and Lee County Sheriff, Lee County Sheriff Carmine Marcino will be there. I encourage anyone that would like to share your thoughts with, to board with the superintendent and the member to be respectful, but do show up and ask your questions. They will be there. I don't know if it'll be an open question-answer forum, but certainly if you have some questions or you have some thoughts, or, you know, share your passion, but be respectful. Be a good person. Don't, don't go there screaming, just, but, but I plan on being there to, to share my thoughts, obviously, with, with the superintendent, and looking forward to those discussions on November 5th. With that?
Yes?
I just want to remind everyone that this Wednesday at 9:00 AM, we're going to have the all-committee sunshine training, records training here in Chambers, 9:00 AM. Should only last an hour-ish.
And that is for all committee members?
All committee members. We will broadcast it also.
Okay. Very good. If there's nothing else?
Any more to words sung by Sly and the Family Stone? I want to thank you for letting me be myself again, and I'll move to adjourn.
All right. We are, any objections? We adjourned at 11:45.